Madison District Public Schools Regular Board of Education Meeting, May 3rd, 2021. Pledge of Allegiance, I'm gonna pick on Ms. Shambles.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, for which it stands one nation under God.
Liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Um, next is roll call, please.
Okay. We're gonna start around today, so we're gonna start with Deborah Ott.
Here.
Mark Holcomb.
Here.
Gloria Thompson.
Here.
Rebecca Shambles.
Here.
Beth Scott.
Here.
And Cindy Holder.
Here.
We have, Crystal Beaver is absent.
With notice.
With notice.
She has let us know ahead of time. Okay, I do need to read the public front fundamentals. Public input is fundamental to the operation of Madison District Public Schools. Our public has an opportunity to speak at every Board of Education meeting. A period of time known as public comment is set aside at each meeting to give parents and the other citizens a chance to speak directly to the board about school-related topics. Anyone who wishes to speak to the board must fill out a request or raise your hand in this instance. Comments are limited to three minutes. School employees will not use this forum to discuss job-related topics. The Board of Education accepts comments made during public comment from anyone who follows these guidelines. Public comment is one of the many information sources that the board uses before making decisions in the best interest of the children who attend Madison District Public Schools. The Board also works with the district staff to address citizens' questions and concerns. And before we go to people that raise their hand, I wanted to reiterate a bylaw just because things got a little out of hand and we're gonna rein it in from here on out. Bylaw 0160, the presiding officer may warn, interrupt, or terminate a participant's statement. If a statement is too lengthy, personally diverted, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Last time that we started to skirt those issues and we're not gonna let that happen anymore. Um, Ms. Mary, I think you've been told if anything like that happens, please automatically cut them off for us. Mr. Abdullah Had, if you're in charge of that, I would ask that you do the same. We're gonna rein this back in. I'm looking for hands.
Ms. Holder, you have a run with your hand up.
Okay.
No last name, just Mr. Ron.
All right, Mr. Ron, if you can introduce yourself, first and last name, please.
Hello, my name's Ron Scott. I live at 2770 Rialto in Madison Heights. I'm also an employee at the Madison District Public Schools. I would just want to come on here, I wanted to make it known and thank our baseball coach that we had this year that he had bought some tarps for the baseball field and donated to it that covers up the home plate in the Pitchersmont area. Out of his own money that he bought and donated to the baseball program as well. And then I also wanted to congratulate our boys' basketball team. Coach Carl and Coach Denham and the other coaches, they are the bronze division champions this year. We had two all-conference players, Malik Davis and Denham Desmond Denham. And then we had an honorable mention, Brandon Tally. And then we also had the MVP of the league on our team named Quentin Jones. And I just wanted to get that out there and let you guys know how well our basketball program did and everything and how the kids are doing. And that's it.
Thank you for the.
Thank you.
Any other hands, Mr. Abdullah?
I'm looking right now, Ms. Holder, as of right now, 7:06, I don't see any other hands up.
Okay, that being said, let's move on, please, to superintendent report.
Thank you, Ms. Holder, a few things that I want to say. This year, because things have been so different, we are doing our typical senior prom. We're doing our junior and senior prom, that's on May 27th. That's gonna be outdoors, again, May 27th, our junior and senior prom. June 4th, we have our high school graduation that is also outdoors. And I want to congratulate Victoria Rankin for receiving $5,000 scholarship from Women of Tomorrow. And I also want to congratulate Bonnie Gerson, who was recognized as school coordinator of the year by Women of Tomorrow. I know Bonnie has received some rewards and accolades, so want to congratulate both these individuals. And this week is Teacher Recognition Week, so I want to encourage any parents out there listening to celebrate, let your voices be heard with our appreciation for our teachers. They've done a wonderful job navigating this pandemic. And frankly, we couldn't be where we are without them. So kudos to all our teachers. I know it's only one week set aside for them, feels, it should be like all year recognition daily. But I do want to congratulate them. And that is all I have for my superintendent's report, Ms. Holder.
So, okay, next up, we certify back-to-school COVID-19 plan. That when you.
I think that's an act item, it's recommended that the board continue.
I just wanted to make sure that we were good. Okay, then, next is me, Board of Education President's Report. Correct, you're good?
No, we do have to actually vote on, you know, the recommendation to recertify our back-to-school plan.
Okay, that's what I thought initially, and then I obviously misunderstood you. Okay, so, give us the info so we can decide what we need to do.
Our cases have gone down. We are seeing a decrease because of, we believe, our, in Oakland County Health Department believes because of spring break has, you know, families coming back from spring break, cases have significantly dropped by 3,000 cases this last week. So we are recommending that we continue with our hybrid plan for the rest of the month of May and will present a recertification in June. So we are recommending at this time to continue with our hybrid plan as previously stated.
Okay, so, do we have a motion and support?
I'll make a motion, Beth Scott.
Beth Scott's making the motion, we have support. Mr. Holcomb said he supports any discussion. Seeing none, just want to make sure we're all good. I don't, oh, there she is, I didn't see Rebecca, so I wanted to make sure there were no hands. Um, that being said, can we have a roll call, please?
Rebecca Shambles?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And then, um, Mr. Abdullah Had, the literacy coaching presentation.
Just wanted to make sure, okay, so we at Madison Elementary School, we're very, very lucky this year to be part of initiative, in an initiative that is led by Oakland Schools, our intermediate school district. They provided us with grant funding to fund not just one, but two positions. We're identified for additional state funding to get two positions to build our teachers' capacity, to be leaders within the building and to coach within our building. They are being trained to coach our own teachers in the best practices in literacy education. So they're being trained best practices by Oakland Schools. They're being trained how to implement those best practices in our school and how to coach our own teaching staff. And it has really led to a lot of exciting collaboration and new initiatives this year. And we have Ms. Lisa Vanderhagen and Kelsey Kane that are our literacy coaches at Madison Elementary that are gonna present for you today.
Hi, everybody, my name is Kelsey Kane. I talk in front of a lot of students every day, but not a lot of adults, so forgive me if my voice shakes a bit. I am a literacy and early literacy coach for Madison Elementary and the Early Childhood. And with me today is my co-coach, Lisa Vanderhagen.
Hi, everyone.
We just want to come and share with you all of the amazing literacy happenings in our district at the elementary and early childhood level. We have come to really find that literacy is developing in such a positive way after the adoption of a new curriculum. And so we're going to get into how our process works and what our job descriptions look like and how we interact with teachers and students on a daily basis.
So we wanted to start off with our district roadmap. This was created as part of the Leo Initiative. Leo stands for Literacy Essentials Oakland and is an initiative created by Oakland Schools to implement literacy coaches and the essential practices into every district. Every district in Oakland County is participating in this project, which is really exciting. We want to begin with our roadmap. This is our guiding document at Madison Elementary and ECC with our mission statement in the center with our goals surrounding. This was created with input from the entire staff in the spring of 2020. This keeps our focus on our goals throughout the school year and is updated and revised throughout the year. This is a document that will continue with each of us, continue with us for each year. We wanted to highlight a few key points, including professional development and the implementation of our new reading curriculum, monitoring our virtual learning plan, maintaining our coaching model, capitalizing and increasing our intervention capacity, and keeping social, emotional learning at the forefront of what we are doing.
So this document is revised quarterly officially and then much more frequently by our literacy leadership team. We have begun the development of this team this year and next year, we really foresee this team growing in its capacity and understanding of literacy and how it affects our district. It is, the team members are listed here, we have all of our administration from both schools. We have a representative from kindergarten, first, second, and third grade. Both us are coaches and both of our reading specialists at either building. We anticipate this team really staying strong and really moving forward to work on our goals and really center around that roadmap practice.
So all of the work that we do is focused around the coaching model and our roadmap goals. We have implemented the Michigan Department of Education's literacy coaching model, where you can see that we work as literacy leaders, but a majority of our time is spent and prioritized with our work with teachers in the classrooms. This is supported by administration and a multi-year initiative. Teachers work with coaches through conferencing, goal-setting, co-planning, modeling, observing, data analysis, and reflecting. All of this work is grounded in the essential practices. This is a document that was developed by the Early Literacy Task Force, which represents Michigan's 56 intermediate school districts. These practices are recommended to be used in every classroom every day.
So part of what drives our coaching model and what we're doing with our teachers is what coaching is. We wanted to be very clear with our teachers that we work with that coaching is really first and foremost, building trusting relationships, working towards the success of all students. That is ultimately our goal, is the success of all students. We want to make sure that our teachers understand it is not an evaluative or administrative position, that we are not there to criticize, we are there to build up support and lead in our role. One of the big things we'd like to highlight about what coaching is this year, it really has surrounded not only lifting our teachers up and providing as much professional development as we can, but also learning aside our teachers as we develop all of this professional development to support the initiative of our new inter-reading literacy curriculum this year. That being said, some of the things that we have given our teachers as options for how to interact with us is this menu here. We wanted to give you an inside look at what that looks like for our teachers. We have interactions with teachers before a lesson, during a lesson, and really any time that they find a need in their classroom. We have multiple avenues, which we'll talk about in a moment, for how a teacher might interact with us in one of these ways. And we're really excited about the amount of positive feedback we've been given and how people have really engaged with us in these ways throughout this school year, especially it being such an insane, cool year.
So along with that coaching menu, we have provided other resources. Some of these resources include coaching hours. These are times throughout the week, every month or so, where we provide professional development that's focused on literacy, where we share all of our new learning that we have gained this year working with Oakland Schools and the Michigan Coaching Network. And these are topics that are relevant and pertain to our students' learning. We also have a website where we house all of our recorded PD sessions and our any literacy research. Go back for me one slide.
One more.
The one with the three purple dots?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, we also have a website where we house all of our recorded PD sessions and our literacy research and then a coaching request form that allows another avenue for teachers to reach out for support or to begin a coaching cycle on a topic they're currently working on with their students. Now we're good. So from all of that, you can see here our coaching interaction so far this school year. We are excited to share out that our 25 teachers made up of four grade-level teams, our reading intervention support and special ed, all of the teachers have participated in some way. On the right, you can see the various types of interactions. So we have 35.5% of our work has been in classrooms modeling. 20.6% has been co-planning alongside teachers, as well as observing and reflecting, taking up a large role. As we continue this program into next year, we look forward to increasing each type of interaction in all classrooms as we learn and grow together. Each interaction made impacts overall classroom achievement and is designed to meet students' needs.
So we got that data to present to you through reflection. Lisa and I take detailed notes about who we work with, how we work with them, and when we work with them to make sure that we are reflecting and making sure that our success is really grounded in, again, improvement of those early literacy skills of our students. So we have a lot of different ways that we reflect and work together. Through many conversations, shouting at each other across the way by our rooms, we have come up with a lot of different ways to really think about the ways we interact with our teachers and students. One of the ways that we have been provided is an outside evaluation source. We are going to be working with them on June 4th to go over the data of, from surveys that were given at the beginning of the year and will shortly go out to our teachers again to see how our data has, our work has affected our data here at our school. We are learning with that process as well, so we're really excited to see how an external evaluator has evaluated our work. We also have monthly meetings with the Literacy Essentials Oakland Initiative. This brings us together with all of the coaches in Oakland County and we really get to reflect on the work that we're doing. Not only do we get to reflect on the work we're doing for ourselves, but we get to get feedback from other coaches, which has really been invaluable, especially for coaching programs that have already been developed. We also work very closely with our literacy leadership team and they have been invaluable resources themselves, being on the ground in the classrooms. They've been really a great source for us in helping reflect on the work we do. And we also have a teacher feedback survey that we like to give out to our teachers that we work with for some immediate feedback. There have been times where we're not quite sure if what we've done, because it's a new program, has really been the most effective that it can be for our teachers. And so we want to give them an opportunity while it's fresh to give us some of that feedback. And we've been really pleasantly surprised with how everything has gone. And so we'd like to give you an opportunity now to just read on the next slide a couple of different excerpts that teachers have given to us. So one of the things that I want to point out, we'll leave it up as you can read while I'm speaking, is that the feedback that we've been given has been very specific. We have been targeting certain things with each of our teachers and we are so impressed with how well they've really responded to us and how well they've really taken what we've done together and grown. So a lot of the feedback we were really excited to hear is really targeted to what they're working on in their classrooms. It wasn't a lot of generic, like, you're doing great, which is very appreciative, but we got great feedback to know what we can continue with and what we can move on with. On the next slide, we have a couple of just short snippets that teachers have said. One of the things that I really want to point out is that our teachers are really thankful that we have this opportunity in our district. That has been said over and over, that it's just awesome to have support specific to literacy, specific to the new work that we're doing. And it has really been really wonderful to hear that and to know that our work is being impactful for our teachers as well as our students. It's wonderful to see our students when we get to go into classrooms and work with them, not just the teachers. Um, other feedback that we solicited was from our administrators. We want them to also find that our program is invaluable and something that we can't miss. And so this is some of the feedback we've gotten from our administration, I'll give you a moment to read. One of the things I'd like to point out about this feedback is that we have been gifted something great from the Leo Essentials Program. We have just talked today, actually, and received some of the materials from our ordering. We received $18,000 awarded to MES and ECC to support that literacy instruction work that we're doing. We have purchased intervention programs, we've purchased core programs, we've purchased supplies. And my personal favorite is a very large, extensive library of diverse books for our kids to read. We're gonna have a checkout system for teachers to have equitable access. And also, we have been able to provide a gift of diverse classroom library starters for our teachers, kindergarten through third grade. And we're hoping to even extend that to fourth and fifth, even though our specific program doesn't quite reach there right now, because we know that fourth and fifth is very important and we will soon be moving towards a supporting role for all of our grade levels. So now we'd like to kind of close back with our roadmap and our goals.
Yeah, so we wanted to end by coming back to where we started, and that's our district roadmap. We included Madison Elementary's vision statement as well to show you how our work as coaches align with our school's overall mission. We look forward to continuing this program for years to come and more importantly, to expand on it each year. We have high goals to expand our coaching into upper-grade levels and other academic areas, including math. Our teachers and students are amazing and we want to continue to support them in any way that we can.
So if you have any questions, thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us and hear about our program. We're really excited about it. We're here for any questions if we have time, I'm not quite sure how all that works.
Anybody have questions? About.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment, it was a wonderful presentation, thank you ladies very much.
Yeah, that sounds very exciting, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, how long do you, do you think it's gonna go to fourth and fifth grade? And how long do you think that'll take? Because it sounds great, but you know, I'd like to see it go to fourth and fifth.
Yeah, so our hope is, just with funding and how things work next year, that Kelsey and I can both stay on as coaches and that would be something we can start next year, even if it's slowly adding fourth grade and fifth the following, or if we have that capacity to add them both on next year.
Wonderful, thank you.
Through the Literacy Essentials Oakland Program, they're specifically targeting kindergarten through third grade due to the reading law. But when we start to be district-funded, that is definitely something I'm sure Ms. Provenzola-Less will talk about.
Yes, and eventually, as part of the third-grade reading law, once third-grade students are identified and if they're below grade level and move up to fourth grade, then they are supposed to still receive supports. But due to the pandemic, some of that, some of that law has been kind of stalled in place, but we are still providing support and interventions for those students as well. And luckily, next year, at least one of those positions currently are gonna be grant-funded through Oakland Schools again for next year. So this will carry forward for sure with at least one of those positions and we're hoping with both in some capacity.
Great.
Thank you very much for your dedication to each other and to the students, thank you.
I just want to add one more thing, because it's Teacher Appreciation Week and I love our teachers, I just want to again say thank you to all of our teachers and specifically to our coaches who have been a wonderful asset to our school this year. Thank you Lisa and Kelsey, you guys are amazing.
Thank you. Okay. And everybody keeps moving, which is very confusing. So I try to keep up with everyone, it just so people watching understand the picture's constantly in motion. Um, with that, you are done, correct, Mr. Abdullah? Great, next up is me for the president's report. Normally, we don't do this, but I've had some concerns. In an effort to get clarity between the board members and the public, I feel it necessary to address some of the issues that we have not been able to resolve thus far. First is public expression of board members by law 0140. And I just want to read it so that everybody's on the same page. Sometimes the statements imply, or the readers, listeners infer, that opinions expressed or statements made are the official positions of the board. The misunderstandings that can result from these incidents can embarrass both the member and the board. Therefore, board members should, when writing or speaking on school matters to the media, legislatures, other officials, make it clear that their views do not necessarily reflect the views of the board or their colleagues of the board. The appendix to that, this bylaw shall apply to all statements and/or writings by individual board members not explicitly sanctioned by a majority of its members. So I wanted that to be clarified, just because we're having some issues with that. Second, conflicting confusion of legal opinion and my role as board president. It's been cited by more than one board member that MESB or Oakland Schools training has been in direct conflict of the Madison District Schools bylaws and policies. Our policies and bylaws are what govern our district. In an absence of a specific rule, then Robert Rules of Order takes precedence. It's not Oakland Schools, it's not MESB. Mr. Beniasak has been quoted many times, he's from MESB, that we have a direct conflict, so I called him. This is the synopsis of our conversation. He's usually only contacted by board presidents, but it's not uncommon for other board members to call him. He said he's had many messages and contacted two of our board members. I explained the confusion that we're having here and, I lost my, my, hang on. Do, 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 I explained the confusion of some things that have caused, caused disagreement. Cause disagreement and we agreed to the solution, him and I. Anytime there is any correspondence, I will be forwarded the information. He will also add, oh, he also added that all the communication by him through I M A S B. Has a disclosure that they give general guidance. They are not legal representatives for any district. Past practice was always understood the board president was the only person to contact the attorney. I know now that multiple times these same two board members have contacted Mister Urban. He is attending every board meeting. All board members have access to him at every meeting to ask questions. We cannot continue to have this conflict of opinion and we need one source of legal guidance. I feel it's my duty to try to resolve this issue therefore. I'm asking for this board to formally make Clark Hill and Joe Urban our official legal representative. In addition, that no other other than board president, superintendent or. Specific person designated will contact and or be responded to. I'm hoping that by making this an action item, we can all move forward together. So that is the end of of my report and. Anybody have anything to say?
This is Cindy. I have a question. The repeat that did you repeat your last statement about superintendent? Did you say include the superintendent? Board president?
Or if there's somebody specifically designated that they're allowed to. So there are some circumstances that we are aware of where that is allowed, so. I want to keep that going.
Okay, would okay, that's my other question with this. Okay. If if you're wanting us to, are you are you asking for us to vote on that this evening?
I am. I would like to have the support to put this in writing so that there's no confusion. With others later, we need to have one vision, one focus. We need to to put our energy moving forward rather than on the chain of emails that we went through a couple of weeks ago. I don't want to see that ever again.
Okay, so can I just add this? So I have a concern about this being the board. Board.
Well, we need a motion to discuss. If this is going to be an action item of any kind, Beth, we need to add it to the agenda as an action item and then we need to make a motion.
I'll make I'll make that motion.
To add it to the agenda as an action item.
Add it to the agenda, yes.
Okay, do we have support? I'll support Ms. Thompson. So we need a, is that for both motions, Beth, or one?
Isn't it just one motion?
I wanted, we can make it one. We can put both of them together. Sure.
Take a motion to amend the agenda and then do the motion.
That's what we're doing. That's what we're doing. We're so I'm making a motion to amend the agenda. So if we want to make it, if we want to make it two items, that's fine. So we're going to amend the agenda. I'm making a motion to amend the agenda to make. To amend the agenda. We'll have to vote on that first.
Right. Okay. Any discussion?
Who seconded that? Thank you.
Deb, to clarify that, to clarify that, this is all I'm only making a motion to amend the agenda.
Right, right.
Ms. Holder.
Mister Holcomb.
Alright, so what's this mean that we're only going to have one law firm now instead of three?
What? We're going to have one place that we're going to for information. So that when we ask a question, we're not told the other law firm or. We are going to be dealing with Mister Urban, Clark Hill. If there's going to be reasons, I'm certain that other people will need to be brought. But M A S B is not one of our law firms. Oakland Schools is not somebody that we go to for legal advice. And I just want everybody to be on the same page for everyone's sake. Yes, Mister Abdullah Had.
So there's a reason we have three previously. So are I'm trying to understand. Are is this motion implying that we only use Clark Hill and no other law firm? Because we have a lot other matters that are going on.
No. First, okay, so first, the motion right now on board is to amend the agenda. That's what we're voting on. We can't discuss.
Good, good point, Beth.
We need to, in us, we have to amend the agenda.
She is right. So Ms. Kennedy, unless there is any other questions to amend the agenda. Don't see any. Go ahead.
Nope, I think that was it. Okay, let's do a call, roll call. Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
And Rebecca Shambles?
No.
Okay, motion pass six five one.
Okay, now with that, then we need a motion made and supported. So who would like to make the motion?
I would like to make them. I I will make the motion to discuss board. The the board to use Clark Hill for board business.
Okay, and. Anybody support?
I'll support.
Okay, um.
I have a I want I had a discussion Cindy about this.
Okay, what when we get to discussion now, I know Mr. Urban was here. I didn't because him and I have not talked about this, I guess. I just wanted to make sure. He knew I had concerns, but he didn't know that I was going to be doing this.
I dropped out quickly, but I'm here.
Okay, so is that sufficient enough? Because yes, we know that you don't do everything for everybody and I know that was Mister Abdullah Had's concern. You know, my focus is to, when we ask you a question for you not to say you don't know what the other law firm said. So we're trying to keep this so that you can be informed. You can keep us in the loop and it's one consistent. Stream of legal opinion.
Well, sure, every lawyer works at the pleasure of the Board of Education who engages in. There's there really is no difference between the board and the administration. Or should not be a difference. You shouldn't have competing voices with regards to this. So you know, the the fact of the matter is that, you know, we work at your pleasure. We work at whatever scope you dictate, you know, that we work for. And you know, certainly there are pending matters, but you know, those pending matters, you know, aren't always pending. So you know, we'll take your direction, whichever way you wish to go.
Okay, and with that, are there any other questions? I can't see your hand, Beth, so go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. So, okay, there's a couple of things I think was misunderstanding. You're not saying that board members can't reach out to M A S B Brad Bonanzik. You're just saying that Brad, whatever Brad relays back to board members, you're going to get a copy of it. So you're not at board members not to reach out to M A S B. So I wanted to clarify.
That that's absolutely true, but at least then we're all on the same page. We know what's been asked and. And if there is a conflict, we we know that's off. Yep.
Okay, and then the second, the second thing I wanted to talk about was. I personally, this is my personal opinion that I. You use it. I don't have a problem using Clark Hill as the board. Attorney. However, I have a problem with our superintendent using the board. Legal counsel without board president aware of it. Because I believe I've been a victim of this, that it will go to Clark Hill and if he's not satisfied with that, we go to another attorney.
Scott's talking about performance. I request closed session immediately. If she's going to address my performance, I'm requesting to go into closed session immediately. If Miss Scott continues to berate me and discuss my performance in public, I do not agree to that.
He does have the right, Beth, I know. We can absolutely go into closed session if if Mister Abdullah Had you feel that. That's what you want to do. I know, Beth, maybe you can make your point and it kind of goes back to my initial thing. Maybe you can make your point without. Being personal about it. I know sometimes that's difficult. But this is one of the things we're kind of trying to streamline.
Understandable. I'll try to make this. I I. So every time, so will if if we're if we are going to vote on Clark Hill. Before Clark Hill's called, will the board president be notified or asked to contact them? Or ask for permission for anybody, whether it be superintendent or board members across the board? Is my question.
Can you, I I don't know, we've never discussed the superintendent. But this is to stop the other board members from contacting. It's like with transparency, we keep hearing. You know, be transparent and then I find out very recently that people have been emailing and calling Joe Urban. Now it puts him in a particular spot. And like I said, the whole reason he's been at these meetings. A part of it was obviously to make sure that we're we're running correctly. But for everyone to have access to him. So to find out after was very disturbing that others had been contacting him. So that's what we're trying to stop. Need to go through the board president. That's always been the way it is. And we need to get some structure here. Go ahead, Mrs. Thompson.
That's probably what I was going to reiterate, that in the past, we've always gone through the president for legal advice. We're not supposed to do it ourselves. And if that continues, we might want to consider sending that individual the bill. Because he's the board president and the board's made up of seven people, not one. Am I correct?
Yeah. Okay, Mrs. Ah.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm clear of, this has nothing to do with the superintendent. This has something to do with Joe being Mister Urban, excuse me, being the board's legal representation. That's that's the bottom line. So if we have legal questions, we go through you and you contact Mister Urban and we get the correct answer. This has nothing to do with our superintendent. Correct?
That that was my intention, yes.
He he continues to go through another law firm regarding contracts or garnishments or whatever at his disposal, correct?
He could, yes.
Okay.
We could talk about, yeah, if that's something that we want to discuss. Um, we always could, but that's not what I'm addressing right this second.
Right, you're addressing board legal.
We need to, yes, we need to follow our own guidelines and the precedence that's already been set. Mrs. Shambles, you have the floor.
I would agree with this if the board's attorney, who is supposed to be contacted on behalf of the board. The information was actually spoken to the board. There have been numerous accounts of the board president contacting Joe Urban and arranging him to be here. I've heard, I've been told that he was helping with the agenda. And then we have him sitting in a three hour plus meeting last week and. He didn't say one word because like nobody asked him anything. It wasn't him, but and then a public member asked. Are we paying for this or is this time donated? It was not addressed and the public member did say, I would like this addressed. Repeatedly, we have public people asking, why do we have multiple attorneys on these calls? And they never get answered. And then I would agree with that if you're the board president is supposed to be the voice piece of the board. So that seven of us aren't contacting him. But when name one time since January eleventh. That the board has been, you know, asked, hey, I'm going to go talk to the attorney about this or just so you know, just an update. I spoke with Mister Urban about this situation. Here's the information. And then he says that you're not doing that because you're worried about information leaks. The board president has no greater power than any other trustee. You're here to facilitate. And make things go smoothly. And it has turned into like you're the guardian of information, but yet we're approving a check registry. With tens of thousands of dollars in legal fees when you add it up through time. And not once are we even being told what these meetings are about.
Can I can I intervene on something?
Yeah, please.
I, yeah, because I review the bills. I can tell you, we, there are a lot of lawyers that the district is using. For example, you know, Mister Abdullah had prefers Trune. That's great. They're a wonderful law firm. And you know, and they give different advice than we give apparently on on issues because I've been corrected at board meetings that Trune has said something different. But we're not charging tens of thousands of dollars legal fees to Madison. I do see the bills. I just don't want anybody to be under the impression that we're charging tens of thousands of dollars. So thank you. I just wanted to let you guys know that I do see.
Eighty an hour, two hundred and eighty an hour adds up.
Okay, Kent, and I guess I will say, and Mister Urban, you can respond. I don't know that I have ever said to you that I that there's an information leak. I'm not sure what that conversation was. I don't know. We all know there is an information leak. So that is not up for discussion. When I contact him, it's to give him the information about when the meetings are. You're smirking, but you don't know what you don't know. You're assuming in your suggesting, but you don't know what you're saying is true. When I get a hold of him, it is to get this done. He is here each and every meeting to keep us in line. You have access to him the whole time like everyone else. And this will continue until we can get through this patch and we had were are able to move on. And we had discussed this with other board members at the beginning of the year and everyone concur. So and this is also a safety net for Mister Abdullah because we see what's on the internet after these meetings are done.
Okay, well.
Does have a function and.
Who it is and prosecute them if it's a closed session. But if you handle somebody if they're leaking closed session information. Because I know I'm not and I know who's assumed to be doing it. But it doesn't mean that you have proof. So if you have proof, find it. That's fine. I'm okay with that. Do whatever you have to do to figure out who it is. But I have said from day one and I myself emailed Mister Urban along with another trustee. And both of us said, all we're asking is that if the board president is contacting legal on behalf of the board. That the board actually be involved in contacting legal and then get the information received afterward. This is not Cindy Holder's.
There there is nothing to give you. There's nothing to give you. He's on the agenda. If there's something that needs to be discussed, it's on the agenda.
It is not normal.
The point you're missing. You don't know what's normal. You're new.
I have seen plenty of board meetings.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to sound that sharp, but. I'm going to apologize for that. With that, is there any other discussion?
Ms. Holder, I just want to clarify. So we could continue. I I could continue with utilizing the three firms that are available to me based on the governance. Organizational meeting that we had, even though this discussion is pertaining to Clark Hill with. Funneling board related topic questions, right? I just want to make sure that I'm understanding.
The hurdle, yes, the hurdle that I'm trying to 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 get over today. Is keeping all seven of us on one information source.
So for me, if I'm you. So for me, if I'm utilizing, for example, on a certain lawsuit, Clark Hill and an another issue, Trune. Nothing changes after this meeting for me tomorrow. This is more of funneling information for board related trustee questions, correct?
Yes, that's what we're addressing today. Yeah, if anybody wants to address the other, we would do it at another time, it's not what I'm talking about. Okay, so. Uh, Beth, since I can't see you, did you have anything else that you wanted to say?
No, by clarification, thank you.
Okay, so to. I just wanted to reread the motion so everybody knows what we're voting on, please.
So the motion is to discuss um, the board to use Clark Hill for board legal business. So basically, it's for that that that's who you're designating as the board members, legal representative.
Okay, that's the first motion, yes.
That's the second motion, Beth, to use that, the first motion was to amend the agenda.
Right. Okay, so then we actually have three. All right, so we're, let's do this one first, go ahead, Mrs. Kennedy, call roll.
Okay, Rebecca Chambliss?
No.
Mark Holcomb.
Yes.
Cindy Holder.
Yes.
Deborah Ah.
Yes.
Beth Scott.
Yes.
And Gloria Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes five one.
Thank you, now, the second, can we have a another additional motion, please, to follow up?
For for what, Cindy?
Just to keep everything to go through the board president. The only ones that can contact legal are the board president, the superintendent. Or someone that is specifically specifically designated to do so. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have support?
I'll support.
Mr. Holcomb, Ms. Thompson, any discussion here?
I I wanna clarify that we, the superintendent and the board president and whoever. You designate, is that what you're saying?
Yes, if we have somebody that specifically needs to be designated to have that ability. Then they would be able to do that as well, yes.
And you're saying that there's no way that we can just make the this Clark Hill specifically for board only? Unless you've been permission.
No. Um, I think that we would have some conflicts, Beth.
Well, okay, so I'm saying that if we. I I would think that if we're gonna do this, everyone should have to contact you, is what I'm saying, I'm trying to clarify this. Before I take my vote, I'm trying to clarify that the superintendent. And you or whoever else you said can go to.
Right, but um, we have a motion, we have support. Um, I guess my my only thing is, there's gonna be times angels going to need to um, contact him. If um, everybody wanted. I don't wanna tie Mr. Abdullah's hands. Um, and there is gonna be times that they're gonna have to contact Mr. Urban or Clark Hill.
And that shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, I I kind of agree with that, Beth, I think right now, I'm really trying to make sure the seven of us. Are on board and this really doesn't have much to do with Mr. Abdullah. Are you are you following my explanation?
I I I clearly understand what you're saying.
Okay, okay.
Yes, I understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
Reread the motion as you've been speaking, so this is what you're actually saying, motion to designate the board president and superintendent. And or a designate to be the contact for Clark Hill regarding board legal questions.
Yes.
That's what you want?
Yes. Um, Mrs. Chambliss had her hand raised and then Mr. Holcomb.
Yes, I think I get what you're trying to do, but the problem is you cannot take away all legal resources for the rest of the trustees. If we have an issue or a concern or a question that might involve you. Or might involve the superintendent or might just be a random legal question about something that we need answered right away. Or for whatever reason, we should have the right to access the legal services that are the board's legal services. To try to make it where everything has to go through you is exactly the type of dictatorship the board had experienced previously. And I didn't think that that was what this board was gonna become. You might not like what we contact Joe about. But if we're asking something specifically about the board and he responds and just says, yes, you can do this or no, you can't do that. That is something that we should have the right to do. Nobody would be emailing him and saying, hey, I got a traffic ticket, can you help me? But if someone is contacting him about a board question. Then that should be available to us when we do research or we're trying to access things and go along the way. It, I never thought that this board would get to where it had to go through the president. To the point that it's a motion where we can't contact someone. And that basically says that if we ever have an issue with you, we are stuck on our own. So is that the kind of motion we're making right now?
Okay, is that the end? Uh, is that your point? Okay, Mr. Holcomb, next up.
Do you, do you have someone in mind that you're going to appoint as the third person?
Third person, no, I just, as more as situations warranty.
Okay.
I I don't want to exclude giving us the brevity that if if there's a situation that comes up, that we wouldn't be able to do that.
Okay, so like what Rebecca just said, we could. One person, somebody could be appointed to call.
If, yeah, if there's something very specific, it wouldn't be lifelong, but it would be for a particular reason, yes.
If you write.
Uh, Mrs. Ah, go ahead.
Oh, Mrs. Thompson had her hand up before me.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Oh, and then I like to say something.
Wouldn't that be a scenario where the designate would come in? If somebody has to call him because of the president of the board. Or, you know, they don't want someone else involved, wouldn't, isn't that where the designate would come in?
Um, can I say typically a designate is like, um. Where we have been um, trying to. It it would be for a very specific reason or very specific cause. I mean, this has been our our running policy for.
Yeah.
However long the district's been operating. So it really isn't uh some that someone trying to be a dictatorship. This is putting into words what has always been the practice, but now the practice isn't being followed. So now we need to put it into words.
Correct, okay.
That's all, that's where we're at, Mrs. Ah, go ahead.
That's, that's what I wanted to say, this is how the policy has always been. We've never had the ability uh to contact the lawyer on our own. We've always gone through our board president or superintendent, that's that's policy, it's always been like that.
Okay, Ms. Chambliss.
I understand what you're saying, but in the event that there is a problem or a question, it doesn't have to be, how do we get rid of Cindy Holder? It could simply be a question and we wanna contact legal and not go through her. There is, needs to be that, because every trustee should have the same right. That in the event you feel something is being done to you, that's wrong or something is not being happening that's appropriate. You should have the resource, as much as I should, to send a quick email to Joe that says, hey, this, this or this is happening. Can you please help me? And he should be able to respond, he could even say, this is something we need to bring the school board, or I'm sorry, the board president into. Because he feels that that's something that involves her. But to take away everybody's right, it means that if I have a problem with Cindy, I need to email Cindy and say, hey, I don't like this about you, let's call Joe.
Yeah. But that's absolutely not true, kinda stretching this. The other thing is, I'm going to reiterate, he is at every meeting, you have access to him at every meeting. So, this is.
And we're not, nothing's being taken away from us, Rebecca, cuz we never had that that ability in the first place, so it's not been taken away from us.
Okay.
If I could just add something to the to the response, um, because whether I'm at every board meeting or not. And I think the the points raised are good ones, as long as, for example, I know there had been some contacts that board members have made with me. Uh, Ms. Holder, where there have been complaints that were leveled. And then I was told I can't tell the board in general what the complaints were. And so, um, you know, that puts me in a bind when, you know, when folks are saying that the board. As a whole needs to know every time council is contacted, so, you know, it does make things a little bit easier. Um, especially when, you know, these conflicting demands are there, you know, when do I tell the board, when don't they tell the board? Do I bring this to the attention of the board? I can bring it to the attention of the board, but a board member that wants me to bring it to the attention of the board is telling me not to bring it to the attention of the board. It just gets real tough for me to discharge my professional obligations to the board. Which is really all, you know, I wanna do and which is why I do appreciate you guys having this discussion. Um, but if there is a concern that a board member has, they certainly have the opportunity to bring it during board comment at a meeting. Or to amend the agenda, you know, at the meeting to make the motion. These are really tough times and and the pattern answers that we've all had, you know, going into these things with normally functioning school districts. Um, you know, as we try to feel our way and as as the group tries to feel its way through these tough times. You know, are are gonna be tough, there, I think, I certainly suspect they're gonna be hurt feelings. I certainly suspect that, you know, there's gonna be controversy and I certainly suspect that people are gonna see many sides of an issue. Um, you know, but if I'm to be able to advise the board, um, you know, on this stuff, I just need to be able to know what the rules are. So that there's always one set of rules for me advising the board, so I I do appreciate. Um, you know, everybody that's on this call taking, taking the time to make this, um, have this discussion, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Cindy, Beth has her hand raised.
Oh, thank you, Beth.
Um, yes, um, okay, just one other thing I wanted to to have clarified. Um, so, when when you're, when we're saying that another. Beside you and um, the superintendent. When you say other people could contact the attorney with permission, it would be the same thing. This third person could be a board member or could be Mary Kennedy or Dr. Hill. Or you would give that permission for those people. The only one you wouldn't be giving permission to is the superintendent, is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Right, and I I would, I would think, um, and Mr. Abdullah has his hand up. I'm going to guess he's the one that contacts through the admin office, but maybe he's not, so.
Ms. Holder, there's times that our HR department, I just wanna be clear. Um, I understand what's going on, I I I'm trying to accept what's going on. But there's times that our HR department has to, and and I wanna be clear that. Anytime we have to contact legal to run the operations of the district, that we don't need any permission. I just want to ensure that it was, it's me or my HR director. Uh, because, you know, there's times that Jamie and I are working together. He doesn't need to ask me, there's uh, you know, legal related question, can I contact legal? I don't wanna say, well, hold on, let me check with Ms. Holder.
Right, no, and and Beth is right, you are right, we're not trying to tie your hands.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it's so, uh, Cindy, I just wanted to clarify again. So it isn't the board policy that we have to go, the board members have to go through the board president. That is a written by law of ours, so we just. This really doesn't necessarily need a vote because it's already written, it's already written by law. If we wanted that changed, it would have to be changed there by law, I wanted to be clear on that. But but again, besides that, I I just wanted to make it clear that if we did have an issue, a board member had an issue. They could go to you to ask to speak to the board.
Right.
So I wanted to clear that up.
Yes, Beth, if you had a specific problem and you needed to. Um, or it was required for you to have access to Joe Urban for a reason, then absolutely. For her, never, no, but it would be for whatever the designated thing is.
Yes, and I ju- I just wanted to clarify that, I was, I I'm aware of that, but. So technically, we really don't need to vote on this, it's already a policy. You're just wanting confirmation, basically. And that we all understand that this is a bylaw. And if we wanted it changed, it would have to be changed in a bylaw or the policies at a later time. So really, this is not something that we really need to vote on, we're just doing it to reiterate to everyone that this, that we're aware this is a bylaw. And this is how we're doing things.
This is the process, yes, thank you.
So should the motion be, so do we technically, I guess we could ask Mr. Urban. Do we actually need to vote on this since it's already a written bylaw? Or should the motion be changed to? Should this motion be removed and another motion that we all acknowledge that this is a bylaw?
Well, let's see the, I need to look at your board policies while we're having this conversation and looking for them here.
Under, under the presidents and that's why, because it doesn't say, even though the president is the one that has the extra duties. It has never given any other board member access to legal. It has always been assumed it was the president, which is why I want clarification now. Um, Beth, I don't wanna have this argument each and every time there's a disagreement. Um, I I'm trying to make this a more fluid. Flow of information for everyone. So that's my goal, that's why I've asked for it.
So the the president's duties under zero one seven one point one say presided meetings and perform other duties as appropriate. I, and I think Brad, um, when, um, you know, basically, you know, kinda said, you know, generally who contacts legal in school boards, but. Um, there's also, I think there's also a bylaw on legal, so I wanna make sure. Ms. Scott, that that's, you know, since you asked a question, then I'm actually looking at the appropriate policy before I ask. Okay, so this is the Board of Ed may apply, it's uh, zero one seven two. The Board of Ed may employ an attorney to represent the school district or board in actions brought forth against the district. And to render other legal services for the welfare of the school district. So I think you've got a custom of having your board president contact legal that has not been codified as a policy yet. Where at least during this quick search I can find.
Well, but just like it clarified so everyone understands. And if there is a problem later, we can, we have something to go back to.
But I do wanna add one other thing, it's kind of a thread that's in this argument. Every single law firm that the district employs works for you. The school board is the client. An administrator or a person may be um, an employee or an officer. Of the client, which is the school board. But the, um, but unless it's disclosed upfront that they're not working for your interest, that they're actually working for the benefit of. An officer or employee of the school district, the engagement is with you. Um, and so, you know, that's, I think, very, very key, I think there's a misunderstanding that. Different aspects of the school district enjoy different and sometimes conflicting representation. Um, there's a pretty solid body of school law, as long as we're all getting the same facts, we all should come to relatively similar conclusions. But every lawyer for the school district works for you, the school board, nobody else. And it's very important that, um, that that's why you get the bills. Um, you know, from all these other law firms, so anyway, I I apologize, I I probably overstated my welcome on this one.
Note, one more ten, Mrs. Chambliss, then we're gonna call the question, go ahead.
So since we are changing it to be that only the president can contact legal. Is it also going to be that the president must give the information gathered to all the members of the board? Because you shouldn't, I don't see why you would be contacting him a ton. It'd be a quick email, meetings on Monday at this time, I'm not sure why we're having lawyers at meetings, but. Um, you know, many people have asked this question, but why are we getting no information? So if it's gonna be that everything has to go through you, then it should also be in return to us that we will be shared the information gathered for all communication.
And and again, I guess you're missing my point, the information gathered has been, do, you know, this is. If there is very, something very specific that we needed. We needed input from him from, it was on the agenda.
And one thing to add to, we, I don't know about other law firms, but we do detailed billing down to the tenth of an hour. So any of that billing, I think I've said it at other meetings, should be available in the administration's office. There's two in in our invoices, there's a cover invoice that has, you know, just a gross amount. But that cover invoice is backed by detailed billing that talks about the tasks that are performed, and so. Very important to, you know, also that detailed billing acts as a summary. Of the month's work and the information that's been sought, just in case anybody wants that to facilitate their understanding of the services being performed.
Yeah, Cindy, can I make a comment, one quick comment to that? Um, I myself have asked for detailed billing. Um, up until about. Three or four months ago, I've asked at every. At that right before every board meeting, when I get my packet, I've asked for details. We don't get detailed, so clearly. We should understand that. We, I've never seen a detailed bill for what everything has been. Oh, I'm sorry, I've seen one. Um, it wasn't from Clark Hill, but. We should be getting detailed. If if the if the if the question is. If this is what, maybe this is what some of the confusion is, is that we're not getting detailed billing. If we ask for it. Shouldn't we be allowed to have the detailed invoice?
I I don't think that Mr. Abdullah had or myself or Mr. Urban. Just using those three as examples of anything to hide. I don't.
Give details and and I just want to remind that we've agreed. That, you know, the invoices Gloria requests them, and if any trustee has questions, that they go through Ms. Thompson.
Ah, good point.
Two, another thing is. People have requested details and I have sent it. So this is where I I take offense. To statements that are being made by trustees that are factually not true. And if you're gonna discuss my performance or my lack of performance, again, I request that we go into closed session. We provide the board whatever's is asked of me, I provide. And my understanding was that the board has designated the trustee Gloria Thompson to request invoices. Ms. Thompson, request those invoices. Ms. Thompson, do you agree that I provide every invoice to you? So I don't want to hear, I don't want to hear that I request and I don't get. Because I do give whatever's requested of me, and and I'm trying not to be upset, Ms. Holder, but I'm taken.
And 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 like I said, we we need to be more cognizant of maybe how a question is answered, I or asked.
Well, first, that wasn't directed to Mr. Abdullah had at all, and I did ask about the law bills and.
I know, I think, could could we say we definitely have been trying to do things a little differently recently?
Yes, and and that's what I'm saying, it wasn't directed to Mr. Abdullah had at all. I don't know why he got all hot headed over it. It had nothing to do with him. I did go to Mrs. Thompson and requested that information. And I just said the confusion may have been in the past, we have not gotten detailed. Um. Uh, lawyer bills. If we're saying going forward, yes, we definitely are, and we get to go to Ms. Thompson. That clears it up. So it had no no directing to Mr. Abdullah at all.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Scott, go ahead.
I just have one thing more to say. I believe Mr. Urban is an asset to be here. We have not gotten multiple emails. Saying that we're violating the OMA. I mean, one day we got six emails saying we're we are violating the OMA. With Mr. Urban sitting right here with us, if we fall into a a hole. And we're starting to violate something, he can catch us. It it stopped the emails, and I think he's, it's worth. His weight and gold to be here so that we don't get called upon, or the state doesn't get called upon again because we're violating. Or being accused of violating the OMA. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Um, oh, Mr. Urban.
Yeah, I did have something to add on the invoice and the detailed billing. While the detailed billing is available to the board. You know, the gross amounts spent on legal are certainly, you know, subject to FOIA, but the detailed billing itself. Could in some circumstances be privileged. So before releasing specific details of detailed billing under a FOIA request or a request from the public. It's always important to consult with the law firm that generated the bill. Before it goes out, just to add, because there is a privilege element to some of those details, gross amount. Fair game, details potentially privileged, just a red flag. I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
Got it. Good to know. Thank you. Uh, seeing no other hands. Can we have the vote, please, Mrs. Kennedy?
So the motion stands as to designate the board president and superintendent and or designate to be to contact for Clark Hill regarding. Board legal questions. That's how it is. Okay, so we're gonna start with Deborah Ott.
Yes.
Beth Scott.
No.
Gloria Thompson.
Yes.
Rebecca Shambless.
No.
Mark Holcomb.
Yes.
Cindy Holder.
Yes.
Motion passes four two.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we are moving on. Uh, board action items, approval of minutes from March twenty third, twenty twenty one. Special board meeting and April fifth, twenty twenty one, regular board meeting. I need a motion and support, please.
Man, President.
Motion. Okay, Mrs. Hut, and support.
I'll support best God.
Thank you, best God supports. I need discussion.
Madam President. Are we voting on both sets of minutes, the twenty third and the fifth, or just just the twenty third?
That's there's, excuse me, a reason to split them. We can do them both. Does anybody have an objection to that?
No.
I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. There we go. See no discussion, Mrs. Kennedy, please.
Okay, Mark Holcomb.
Yes.
Rebecca Shambless.
Yes.
Deborah Ott.
Yes.
Cindy Holder.
Yes.
Beth Scott.
Yes.
Gloria Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Next item up is our Neola Administrative Guidelines Development. And with this, um, I know that you had discussed this a little bit before, Mr. Abdullah. Um, is there anything that you, um. Wanted to add? Is there a preference as to how this is broken down from our finance department?
Yeah, I would just like to purchase it all at once.
Okay, so the suggested motion is to pay ten thousand five hundred dollars. Due and payable upon execution of the agreement. Do we have a maker and support?
I'll be the maker of this. This is best God.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Support.
I'll support as.
Also, oh, Gloria.
Mrs. Thompson is support. Any discussion? Seeing no hands, Mrs. Kennedy.
Rebecca Shambless.
Yes.
Mark Holcomb.
Yes.
Cindy Holder.
Yes.
Deborah Ott.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Gloria Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes six, six zero.
Thank you. Um, next up is Oakland Schools twenty one, twenty two budget resolution. Um, we got a lot of heavy reading this past weekend. Um, this is all. Required legal. Uh. Bookkeeping, and I'm trying to think of the word, housekeeping for Oakland Schools. Um, the motion is recommended that the Board of Education approve the Oakland Schools twenty one, twenty two budget resolution. As presented. I need a maker and support.
Madam President, I'll make the motion.
Mrs. Hut, do we have support?
I'll support.
Mr. Holcomb, uh, any discussion?
Yes, this is best God. Um. So, just enough you for the future, since this. This and the other one was about six hundred and some pages or more. Um, in the future, if we could get this when the school district receives it, because my entire weekend was designated for this.
I know it's heavy reading, but.
Mrs. Hut, go ahead.
I I realize it was heavy reading, but this is Oakland Schools. We we can't change anything that they have found. We can't add or delete. This is their budget, and they're just asking for each district in their. Um, situation just for approval. That's it.
I, and I fully understand that, and yes, I do understand that, but, um, in the past, we've had. It, like, last year's was only, the total package was only about forty or fifty pages. It wasn't. All this, like, there was an overview, I think, that we received. It wasn't, you know, six hundred, close to seven hundred pages. So if I'm gonna vote on this, I feel obligated into reading it as a vote, so. Then then just point it out, for the future, it would be nice if we would get it when the school district gets it, if they know we have. To vote on this is all that I'm asking.
I think that's duly noted, right, Mr. Abdullah. No problem. We can, we'll do what we can. Uh, Mrs. Chamberlain.
Um, I know that on August or April twenty seventh, they had a meeting about this, and some districts were able to send representatives. Maybe for in the future, if we could send someone just to go for the evening, you know, it's a couple hours just to get, you know. Maybe a summary of this to bring back to the other trustees. So, you know, that way, nobody feels obligated to read six hundred pages, and then we all feel confident that we did, like, due diligence in our vote.
Good point. Thank you. Anybody else? No, okay, with that, new question, please, Mrs. Kennedy.
Okay, Mark Holcomb.
Yes.
Deborah Ott.
Yes.
Gloria Thompson.
Yes.
Rebecca Shambless.
Yeah.
Cindy Holder.
Yes.
And Beth Scott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next, uh, we have so many of them.
Miss Holder. Miss Holder.
I just want to make sure I have the right one. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve Oakland Schools' cost of consortium enrollment. For M I P E E R, Finance and Human Resources Software System.
You're missing one, Cindy. You're missing approval of Oakland Schools twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget resolution.
I thought that's what we just said.
No, I'm sorry, finance, HR software.
Yeah, that's that's what.
That's what we're on now. Did I miss something?
We missed, you're, we missed four C Oakland School of twenty twenty one budget for review and approval. This is why it was more than six hundred pages, because it was actually all three of its items together was over six pages. So one was the actual one for approval, one was the resolution, and then there was the cost.
Great.
Okay, all right.
Generally, you all did approve it. They're all related. Once you gave this one approval, you know, you really did approve all of it. You really are on. On our agenda, it says that it it's asking for us to vote on each one individually. On our agenda, it says, see, any.
Okay, well, let's do it.
Okay, so can we take care of the consortium cost, and I'm gonna try to find what we're working on now, the budget resolution?
Okay. I'll make the motion, Mrs. Mrs. Madam President.
Uh, Mrs. Hut, support.
I'll support.
Mrs. Thompson, any questions? Okay. Uh. Mrs. Kennedy, please.
Okay, um, Beth Scott.
Yes.
Deborah Ott.
Yes.
Cindy Holder.
Yes.
Mark Holcomb.
Yes.
Rebecca Shambless.
Yes.
And Gloria Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and I found the the sheet that I needed. This recommended that the Board of Education approve the Oakland Schools twenty one, twenty two budget resolution as presented to the board. That will then take care of it for us? Yes?
Yes. Yes.
I just want to say something. Um, there's a lot of people that are texting me that are waiting to be let into the meeting. Um, that's why I'm just trying to interrupt, because they're trying to get in, and they keep texting. Several people have texted me.
Seems like people are losing and coming back in.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just want to make sure that the public is allowed to be in.
Okay, um, Mr. Holcomb.
I'll make the motion.
Alrighty.
I'll support.
I'll support best God.
Best God. And discussion? See none, Mrs. Kennedy.
Rebecca Shambless.
Yes.
Mark Holcomb.
Yes.
Cindy Holder.
Yes.
Deborah Ott.
Yes.
Beth Scott.
Yes.
And Gloria Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Miss Holder, one more thing, sorry to interrupt again. Um, just a reminder, some some trustees have medical conditions. Uh, it's been about ninety minutes, but I'm gonna remind you, um, that some trust, you have medical conditions that we have to be mindful of.
Um, is there anybody that needs to take a break sooner rather than later? I'm hoping most of this will be able to run through rather quickly. I don't see anybody, so we're all good right now? All right.
I'm good.
I'm sorry, Beth.
I'm good.
Alrighty, uh, next up is approval of the one five year summer school math program. It is recommended that, uh, the Board of Education approve the summer school math. Program to be sent out for bid. We need a motion and support, please.
I'll make that motion.
Mrs. Thompson, support.
I'll support.
Uh, we'll give it to Mrs. Hut this time, has that, um. Mr. Abdullah, do you have anything you want to ask? Add to this?
Um, the reason we're doing one slash five, we just want to be flexible with our options. Um, in fact, we're not gonna buy the same program for one year and five year, but. We're presenting it to you that way to see what the best value is for us. Um, that's why we did it that way. So we're not gonna be purchasing the program twice.
Got it. Okay, any other questions? See none, Mrs. Kennedy.
Okay, Mark Holcomb.
Yes.
Rebecca Shambless.
Yes.
Deborah Ott.
Yes.
Cindy Holder.
Yes.
Gloria Thompson.
Yes.
Beth Scott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Next up is, uh. Approval of Achieve three thousand program purchase. It is recommended for the Board of Education to approve the purchase of the Achieve three thousand program to be used during summer school. Uh, we need a maker and support, please. Mr. Holcomb, Mrs. Chamberlain's support, please. Uh, anything that you'd like to add with this, Mr. Abdullah?
Not at all. I think it's self explanatory. It's just.
Okay, thank you. Um, seeing no hands raised, Mrs. Kennedy.
Rebecca Shambless.
Yes.
Mark Holcomb.
Yes.
Cindy Holder.
Yes.
Deborah Ott.
Yes.
Beth Scott.
Yes.
Gloria Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next up, Madison Elementary Math slash ELA Academic Coach and Interventionist. Um, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the literacy and math coach slash. Interventionist position at Madison Elementary. Can we have a maker and support, please?
I'll make it.
Mrs. Chamberlain is the maker and support.
I'll support.
Mrs. At?
Mrs. At, yep, yes. Sorry.
Uh, any discussion? Uh, Mrs. Chamberlain, go ahead.
I just had a couple of questions. I know that it um is gonna be grant and title funded. Um, but will it be posted internally for a full-time like full-time teacher to maybe absorb the position or are we seeking like? Somebody completely new? Um, and then also. Would it cover, is this going to be something that they can use? Because you know how teachers have like extra hours that they have to do like little things within the commu- within the school? Would it be covering those? Could they use it for those instead of coaching or like? I guess my question is, is it gonna be somebody new or are we expanding somebody's current roles?
We're posting it. We typically post items internally. We allow the building administration to. Uh, facilitate and select uh the the most qualified candidate that, you know, they would like. Um, but this is a new position that that's why we're presenting it to you. This is a new posting. Um, it it will not be utilized just to um patch sub work or stuff like that. The work of an interventionist and a coach. Is uh very sensitive, as you saw with um both uh Kelsey and um and and Lisa. It it takes a lot of work to do the intervention piece and the coaching, so we try to focus and center on that to bridge the gap on learning loss.
Okay, Holder, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, please.
So I've noticed that the the reading and the math and literacy, eh, we are focused on Madison Elementary. Um, I I I guess this would go to Mister Abdullah had with this. Are we gonna do any focus on books in middle school or Madison High School? Or um, well, ECC is on the reading program, but well, are we looking into um? Grants and and title funding for the books in or Madison for these English and math?
So i- if you if you do the research on um where the gap starts to widen. It is from kindergarten, first, second, third grade. Okay, so if we focus on and support early literacy. Then i- i- it fortifies and it strengthens. Um, at at the age of seventeen and eighteen, that. It is our expectation that the intervention should have taken place already. And therefore, we're we are focusing on that, especially with that third grade reading law. There's a lot uh um high stakes. Uh, um, lower L. And so that's why our focus is on lower L. We believe that if we fortify our younger learners. That as they grow and they have that foundation, that the achievement gap will will get a lot closer as they get older. That's why our focus is there, but. It does not mean that we're not fo- supporting our secondary level um administration, but every building has different needs.
Okay, I I'm just saying, I I'm I'm looking more towards like the learning loss because of the pandemic, any learning loss, I guess, which would is what I'm referring to, I guess. Which may be a different subject, I guess. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? See none, Mrs. Kennedy.
Okay, roll call. Beth Scott.
Yes.
Deborah Ott.
Yes.
Cindy Holder.
Yes.
Mark Holcomb.
Yes.
Rebecca Shambles.
Yeah.
Gloria Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up, approval of diversity, equity, and inclusion coordinator. Does recommend that the Board of Education approve the diversity, equity, and inclusion coordinator position. I need a maker and support, please.
I'll make.
Uh, sorry, Mrs. At made the motion, support is.
I'll support.
Mrs. Thompson, uh, discussion?
I do.
Go ahead, Miss Scott.
So we're, so the I I guess we're looking for this to be a new position. Apparently, we're gonna post this position, but my question would be, why wouldn't this be the special education director's position? Or have special ed, since he's already, since our special ed director, I would assume qualifies in diversity and equity. And inclusion. He specializes in that being a special education, so we wouldn't utilize their already special education director?
Diversity calls for a lot more than just someone who specializes in special education. Um, understanding cultures, understanding um what the uh equality and um inequality that's going on. Uh, that is more than just a special education. Me saying that I'm a ESL teacher and understand how to. Um, do intervention with English language learners does not qualify me to do a work of diversity, equity, and equality. I would hope that the board would entrust me uh after approving the position to put the best qualified person uh in that position.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Okay, oh, Mrs. Chamberlain, go ahead.
Just super quick, I was just wondering if we um approve the position, would we then approve who is selected to take that position?
I I I believe thus operationally, I uh with um, a- as a reminder, I am your one employee and everyone else, um, you know. Works on on with me, I guess, and so I would I would hope again that the board trusts me enough to hire the most qualified person for the for the job.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was like when Jamie took over like the web design and stuff and and Kat took over part of the kitchen. I didn't know if it was something like that.
We we do that, Ms. Chamberlain, because uh previous years stipends were granted without the board knowing or having an idea of what's being. And so in our effort to be transparent, any stipends and and items like that, I do come to you guys because um the more you know. The 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 less uh issues we have.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Miss Scott.
Okay, there, there's no salary amount on here. Um, is there us? Us, is this okay, or is this within, are we hiring within, and is there a salary amount to this?
Mister Abdullah had.
Um. You know, I I, Ms. Holder, I sent out like ten emails asking the board members, please send me questions that you have so I could be prepared. I'm not trying to be a stickler to this. I I literally spent hours sending emails and and asking the board, please contact me so I could be prepared for that. So I just want to remind the board, in order to run smooth meetings, that the board have to do their job. To send me the questions they have so we could have a smoother meeting, but. A- again, it's it's grant, we're trying to use S R funding. Yes, we're trying to use S R funding for it. Um, we're we're trying to be stay below, um, you know. I I'm not prepared to discuss some other, I I was not prepared to discuss some other matters, Ms. Holder.
Okay, can can I ask, um, and I think the fair question is, and you and you're right, and. I know that Beth had said, and maybe I didn't forward it. If that's the case, then I apologize. I know I heard from her later that she was feeling. Um, underwater, trying to catch up with all the reading, so, um, but it you did say to me, did you not, that this was gonna be in the. Teachers, part of the teachers.
No, not the diversity equity, the diversity. I'm looking, I am not looking to hire a new candidate. I'm to absorb um, to provide a stipend for an uh a current administrator.
Okay.
And I believe I did send that in in the board update, Ms. Holder, to 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 all the trustees. I did send that in there.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, so my question is, can we table this till we have more information?
You have, and you have the position, you have the details. I've sent you the information. I'm trying to understand what what did we not share with you that would cause you to table um a topic or a.
Well, I I'm just, I'm I'm because I read about the, I read about the last position. That it was being titled grant and title funded money, but I did not read it unless I missed it. But I did tell Cindy, I sent Cindy and Joe Urban an email saying that I was trying to get caught up with all of the reading. So I didn't read if this was used with title money, and it's just a question. I seen the other one, but. This was not in, was not listed in that that I'm aware of unless I missed something in that email. If we could, I have two minutes to look at, I'll look at my email to see if I missed something, but I didn't see it in there.
Could we take like maybe like a five-minute break and let her read and then? Other people.
Is it, but it's sent in a, Miss, okay, Mister Abdullah had was the cost? Or the pay for this new position, was it in an email update?
I'm 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 looking right now. Uh, again, I I wish you would have asked me.
That's okay, that's okay. Let's, let's. We're all doing our best.
I'm not gonna ca- cause a problem. I just didn't see this in an email.
So my my thing is, is he's just asking us for permission to look for a diversity and equity and can inclusion coordinator, is that? And it's gonna be how, it's going to be funded by S R funds and and.
I'm gonna use S R funding, absolutely.
Okay.
So do we need a few minutes? I I don't want. Um, to put Mister Abdullah out on the spot, and I don't want to make Beth feel that she's rushed.
Mary, there's, there's people waiting again in the waiting room. You gotta keep letting them in, please.
I I was just.
Thank you.
I'm not, I I'm really not trying to create a problem. I can understand the the other position was being posted as title-funded grant money. This one, I didn't have clarification on it. If I missed an email, I I would, I'm more than happy to be corrected, but.
I believe I just answered the question that we are gonna use S R money. So is there any other questions that I could answer? Uh, to make uh the trustees' job easier on this position. I I don't recommend tabling it. I, we really need to do the work. And we need to move on.
My question is, is that was it in an email, how much, whether it's title money, grant money? Or the school is paying for, however it's used, was it in an email stating how much the the cost of this is gonna be?
The salary in both positions were not in the email or in the contracts. So we are just seeking approval of the positions at this time.
So how it was being funded was.
Full-time position, which uh I plan on the administrator absorbing as a stipend for fifteen thousand.
So it that's in the email, right, Mister Holcomb?
Yes.
Yes.
So, okay, I don't know what else to do, Ms. Holder. I I.
Okay, we're good. I didn't see that this position was in there. That's fine. Again.
The email.
I feel that he's getting upset with me because I'm questioning. I didn't see that.
Okay, so so are you now comfortable to proceed on, Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Any other questions? See none, Mrs. Kennedy.
Okay, um, Cindy Holder.
Yes.
Mark Holcomb.
Yes.
Deborah Ott.
Yes.
Beth, Rebecca Shambles.
Yes.
Deborah Ott.
Yes, again.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, Mary.
Yes.
And Gloria Thompson. I'm trying not to call the same people in the same order.
Yeah.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay, next up, superintendent goals. Uh, the administration is recommending that the board approve. The superintendent goals as presented. You need support and a motion, and then we can have discussion.
I'll make the motion.
Chamberlain, you want to make the motion?
No, I was just asking if we could take just like a three-minute break.
Um, I can do that as everybody else, okay?
It's gonna be a long time, like it's gonna be a discussion, so.
It shouldn't be a discussion, but yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Um, is is three minutes enough? Do you need Beth? Do you need more like ten? What do we need to make everybody good?
I I I don't need a break. I'm fine. If if Rebecca needs or whoever needs one, that's fine. I'm fine not needing a break, but.
Okay, Rebecca, if you need a break, um, we can have a motion to take a five-minute break. And I don't know what the official time is. My clock never matches anybody.
Eight forty seven.
Eight forty seven. Um, can we have a maker and support?
I'll make it.
I'll support.
Miss Beth, support, can we call world, please?
Mark Holcomb.
Yes.
Rebecca Shambles.
Yes.
Cindy Holder.
Yes.
Beth Scott.
Yes.
Deborah Ott.
Yes.
Gloria Thompson.
Yes.
Okay, so we're looking at about.
Nine oh three.
Nine oh three, we're back in.
Five-minute break. I'm sorry, five minutes.
Mary, Mary, make sure you uh you turn off the trustees' cameras and mute everyone and make sure no chat is uh available.
Alright, eight fifty-three, you're right, uh, Cindy.
So it's fifty-three, we're back, I'm confused.
Yes.
Thank you. Got it.
Cindy, your your cameras, thank you.
Cindy, your, your cameras, thank you.
I didn't want to miss my colleague here. How close are we there? To, uh? Getting through this, thank you, Mary, I appreciate the help.
So we still have superintendent goals, um, mediation consultant agreement?
Yeah.
Um, resolution for the homes, non homestead village proposal? Then we, the only other action items would be, um, HR, general HR stuff and then the check register.
Got it, cool, 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 um, is, is Mr. Jamie here?
Yes, he is.
Is he live?
I'm here, my, my camera isn't working very well, as you can see, but.
That's okay, hi. Yeah, the stranger in the dark, so it had been brought to my attention? That in the past you might have done that human resources personnel report? And I don't want to step on your toes, if you would like for me to turn it over to you, when we get to that point, I would be glad to.
That's your call, whatever you want me to do, I'm fine with.
I, I, I.
Cindy may want a break.
I will turn it over to you, I was trying to be helpful, but I'm not trying to take over your job for sure.
Not, not at all, I don't mind, but yeah, I can, I can take care of it, no problem.
Okay, then, then from now on, I will hand over the reins to you, sir.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Beth, are you back?
I'm back, I didn't leave.
Oh, okay, uh, so we are waiting on, um, Ms. Rebecca, there she is. And everyone else is here? Yes. Uh, is the time correct? Can we go back in?
Yes.
Eight fifty-four.
Eight fifty-four, so we are back in session, next on the agenda, approval of superintendent goals. Um. And the administration is recommending the board approve the superintendent goals as presented. Um, need a maker in support and then discussion if any.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Ott, Mr. Holcomb?
Oh, support, yep.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I do, Ms. Holder.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, in underneath communications, I would like to have seen more detail than just, um, improve communication both? Internal, internally and externally, um, I would like that added to that, um? That the e-mails from community, staff, board of education? Be answered within a timeframe, even if it's, I'm researching and I'm getting back. I'll get back to you or someone else will follow up. Um, I would like to see that, that was one of my biggest things for goals. Uh, the other thing is, um, there's nowhere on here which ones are, we're considering short term or long term? And we don't have a measuring tool? That the board of education can look at. I know it says will be updated, but we specifically said, and Rod Green agreed? That there would be a measuring tool that we could look at? As time goes on to keep track.
Okay, um, it, I, I would answer, but is there anybody else that has anything misses out, go ahead?
Well, it says on the back, some of these object, objectives will be completed in short term. Others will be in long term, I will be providing progress reports on a regular basis. I would imagine he's going to be updating us as he does every Sunday night? In his updates, if one of these that he has completed or working on, um? I mean curriculum, that's, that's gonna be a short term, all he's gotta do is get together with his people? And get the curriculum ordered and such, um? We, we talked about that, how many hours were we in this last meeting? When we did these goals?
Yeah, and I specifically, one of my top ones was specifically the emails and the response time back. I said that it does say improve communication both internally, externally, but? Like I said, I wanted to clarify, I wanted to be clarified what the response time would be, even if we got a response back? I'm working on this, or Dr. Hill is going to be following up with this, or? Not just with the board of education, but with community and staff members. The community members that come forward and have questions? Someone has to respond back to them, whether, I'm not, I'm not, Mr. Abdullah had may? Have, I don't know, Mary Kennedy responded back to public comments or something, I just wanted it to be a little bit more detailed in that area. And I understand, I don't, my short-term goal might be different than, um, Mr. Abdullah had's short-term goal. Same thing with my long-term goal, I'd like to see us point out which one? Even if it's just roughly short-term or long-term, or like previous goals that I have seen? Um? States that, and there's a measuring tool? That I would imagine that the board would be interested in having that tool to be able to give? A fair evaluation to Mr. Abdullah at that time of his evaluation.
Ms. Holder, the, um, Rod Green? Jotted our preferences several times, asked us to show our hands, I took that document from him. At this point, it is not my recommendation to deviate from that recommendation. So my recommendation is to proceed with the document that we shared with the board? Um, and, and then we can move forward.
Rod Green is the one that prepared this for you, Mr. Abdullah?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So there, I, I would, so I could try to go back and look at the video, which is not posted on the website, I did try to go back to look at that? That website because some of my notes are different than, than these here, because? I know, first of all, my number one goal is communication and emails. That was my number one goal, and Mr. Green did say in that video that absolutely we would have a measuring tool. But again, we're recording these and they're not being put on the website, so I would have gone back to clarify to make sure, maybe? My notes are wrong, but I can't go back and take a look at it. And I'm not, in my notes, it, like I said, my number one thing was emails.
Okay, um, Beth, maybe we'll get some clarification, we're gonna do Mrs. Shambless and then Mrs. Thompson.
I just have one thing that I wanted to recommend maybe changing and then a question. So under curriculum, it says review special education, five oh four, advanced placement plans as needed. I would like to see that more as a quarterly thing, um, because we wouldn't know if something's failing a child? Until it's too late if we do it as needed, it shouldn't have to be brought to us, we should be reviewing quarterly to make sure that we are? Proactive in these kids and not reactive afterwards. And then, um, the one thing I have a question about is under administrative, it says hire and retain staff, and I wanted to know? What are we going to do to retain staff that, like what is something that, like a plan? Um, I don't know how to word it, but I don't know how to measure this because we are losing staff pretty, pretty regularly. Okay.
Uh, next, Mrs. Thompson.
Um. I'm not sure what we're talking about when we say a measuring tool. If Rod Green is getting back to us on a regular basis, is that going to be? Is he going to be measuring? And getting back to us, so we know what's? Being accomplished?
My, my specific question to him Gloria was? That there are measuring tools that other school districts use? To keep track of the goals and the progress? And my specific question to him was? There is a measuring tool, can we create a measuring tool for our school board? To have access to it so that everyone can see where we're at? We can, I'm not saying that Mr. Abdullah does not update us on, on Sundays, but? There, who is gonna really remember, is everybody gonna have this in front of them on Sunday and be writing down notes? On what we're being updated, there's so many things, if we had a graph? Which I'm calling a measuring tool, which I, I, is like a graph? That says what goals, the goals that have been listed? The goals that have been accomplished along the way, so when the time comes that we evaluate the superintendent? We have that in front of us and we know? So we're not trying to guess which goals were accomplished, how far did we get on these? It, it was, it is a way of protecting him from the goals that are listed.
Some, some items are common sense, I don't need, um, I appreciate you trying to protect me, I don't need, um? Protection, the measuring tool is the superintendent evaluation tool. If I want to be rated highly effective? It is my job to ensure that you're getting all the information of our accomplishments as we accomplish them. For example, when we're presenting curriculum, if I want to get evaluated as highly effective? It would be common sense that the superintendent would update the board as goals get accomplished, so then in December? I, I have those accomplishments beforehand, and if you, if you recall? Typically in October, I will send you updates on, on accomplishments, so? Again, I, I appreciate you trying to protect me, I don't need the protection, I just need the support. And, and.
Oh.
On, I just.
Okay, so let me clear, let me clarify then? In my opinion? Mr. Abdullah says he doesn't need protection, that's fine, but in my opinion, it's hard for me to keep up? With updates and marking and knowing these goals that are in front of us right now? It's hard to keep track unless there's a measuring tool. If that video was posted so that we could see it? And re-watch it if we chose to, we would know exactly the words that Rod said? Which was, absolutely, we can create a measuring tool, which is basically a graph on the, all the goals? And which goals have been accomplished?
Can, can I add one thing, please, and I, and maybe this will answer that? Um, I did ask, because I know you, you had said something to me, and I did ask more than one person. My notes never specifically said emails, I know we discussed it, I know it was, um? Inferred, or we all? I don't want to use the word assumed, we all expect that it's going to be the improved communication internally and externally. Honestly, when I look back at my? Minutes, my personal minutes, I did not have email as a subsection of that. I know it was discussed, I know it was important, I know a lot of us said it. Um, so, um, that was just my notes that I took. So, and I know others had done the same thing, because we were all like at first, yeah, of course it was covered, then it's like, yes, it was covered. But under this overall topic, not as necessarily a bullet point, is what I had. Um, the second thing you were talking about? I was under the impression, once these are, um, accepted? That they were gonna kind of give us a graph, and I thought then we were gonna get updates as to what was done and what wasn't. We have to accept this first in order to have a place to start, is that not correct? Did anybody understand that differently than I did? I'm not seeing anybody, Mrs. Shambless and Mrs. Thompson.
But when, um, Rod Green was talking, I thought he said? That he and Angel would go back, they would play with everything, get it to where it kind of encompassed most of our big, you know, ticket items? And then they would make it measurable and everything for us, and that we would be getting a? Basically, not like a rough draft, but you know, something that we could tweak a little bit? Um, to really fit our needs or what, you know, we feel is necessary? And then that would be the final thing, but that to always keep in mind the, the mountain of stuff that Mr. Abdullah had is currently working? So that we don't add too much new stuff, so this, he was gonna give us something that was kind of an appropriate tool and that we could tweak it a little bit. That's how I.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Thompson?
Yeah, my understanding was we were gonna get, um, current, we were gonna get updates on this after it was tweaked? Am I, am I wrong? I don't have my notes in front of me? But I, I understood that we would get periodic? Um, from, I guess, red green.
Well, you would get, I, I, you would get the periodic updates of where we are from, from me.
Correct.
Yes. For us, yeah, so as, for example? As we're doing the summer school, which would be a short, right, the summer school is right around the corner? Or teachers bargaining? Some items are self-evident, for example, when we present you a teacher's contract ratification? You would understand that, okay, well, that job is completed. Uh, when, when we go through summer school and you get those periodic reportings? Some things are self-evident, and then I would give you periodic updates of our curriculum? Where we are with, um, infrastructure updates or bond, um? Uh, ideas or strategies, those would come through time as we prepare, that's the way I interpreted that, as we get more? Information, we present it to the board to get periodic updates. That's what I took out of it.
So, so Beth, did that answer your question?
No, I mean, like I said, I wish that the video was out so that we, I could go over it? Because in my notes explicitly it said, but I'm not gonna argue with Ford on it or Mr. Abdullah, it is what it is.
I will.
So when, when that, when that video comes out, then I will? Rewatch that training video, which I'm gonna assume is going to be put on the website, correct, Mr. Abdullah?
We're, we're working right now, trying to get the Zoom stuff, um, we're, we're, we're still, we're, eventually it'll get on there, we're, we're trying to get our stuff caught up, yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, I guess, Mr. Abdullah, is it your understanding that emails are gonna be a critical part of? Uh, improve communication both internally and externally?
I mean, that's part of any profession, my understanding is, as emails come in, I respond to them. Uh, if, if there is a, a time where I overlook an email, it's not intentional? Um, but for, you know, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, as emails come in? And, um, people are asking information, we do respond or I do forward it to the appropriate. There's times that? Community members might badger us or heckle us, uh, those emails were not, will not be, uh, answered? But that is not in, um? For individuals to try to get a, answers to questions for, um, the school district, it's just more to heckle? Or harass or badger us, and those emails as professionals, we do ignore.
And that, and that too, you did reach out to us? Um, and if I dropped the ball at all? Um, I, I would apologize to Beth and to you, because I really did try. I was trying to, to get my thoughts clear on what I wanted to say today, um? But if I did drop the ball with the communication between you and Beth, um, I apologize to both of you. Um, I, I just wanted to make that clear, because I do know, um, that you did make more than extra effort to make sure that everybody? Um, had questions asked, and I know, like I said, that we were kind of overwhelmed with? All the paperwork that we got, so, um, I want everybody to be comfortable with this, we know that this is, um? Not cast in stone, things are going to change. But, um, is there anything, um? I guess, what does the board feel, are we ready to, to move on? With this is presented?
I would say, yeah, I mean, I think when improved communication both internally, that would be with us and externally would be with the public if they have questions? Or emails? I mean, I'm, I'm willing to move on.
And I'm ready to move on, I just said that I will go back, when that video gets posted, I'll go back? And I will bring it to the board's attention where those sections are.
Okay.
Oh, Rebecca? Oh, Rebecca.
Okay, okay. Thank, thank you, Beth and Ms. Chambliss. Go ahead.
Willing to go forward. I just really want that where it says a special ad in the five oh four advanced placement plans as needed. I really think that leaves a huge gap. For children to fall into. I don't think we should, as needed, when an issue arise, we review it and we shouldn't be waiting for that issue. And I know that very recently we've had some major hiccups. With students five oh four plans and things like that. So I really think. Making it quarterly would be most beneficial to these kids.
Um, I, I just want to remind the board, some, some, some issues with student related issues are not. Brought before the board, um, not in all public session, uh, public or in an email. Uh, in, in, there are some violations there. So I just want you to know. I, I trust our special education director. I trust my building principals. Um, to do their job. Um, and then I, I could give you a general, um. Um, changes in programming, but individual issues like that. Uh, are very sensitive because of. What they represent with, uh, learning needs of individual students. So I just want to make sure. After we leave here, it's not like you're going to get an update on Johnny or Steven or.
Oh, no, no.
Things like that. So I just want to be clear. Um. And I do have one hundred percent confidence in, in our administration. And I would hope that the board has confidence in me to implement our job. And if you're not, then the evaluation tool there is, is in December. Where you could, you know, um, rate me as, as you see fit.
And if I'm not mistaken, I think the special education, uh, was something that I brought up. I think that was more, um, as electives and things. I think that's where I. And it's in there, explore curriculum and electives, well, at least for Madison High School. I wanted to explore other activities, um. And, and things for special ed and the five oh fours is what I, in my notes I have. Um. So I don't know what it says. I mean, I didn't understand plans as needed. Um, because I would think that that would be the special ed director's position on, um. I E Ps or five oh fours or whatever.
Again, these are operational matters. I would, I would hope that.
Yeah.
Would allow me to run the operations of the district, um, and, you know, um. And then work with our governance part, which is part, which is the training that's coming up on governance. Roles of trustees versus the role of the superintendent, which I think is very much needed.
Right. Well, I just want to be clear. I wasn't asking for an update on in, individual students. I'm saying if this is part of your job, like this is listed as one of your tasks. I'm just saying. The timeframe of it could be more proactive. Because I know that you're highly involved in that. And I'm not asking, you know, how's Angel doing? Are we following his plan? How's he learning? I'm just simply saying. That I do know you're highly involved in that. So maybe make it like a quarterly thing. As, as it checks and balances. It doesn't mean anyone's doing an awful job. It just, if it's listed as part of your job, I'm just saying.
Sure.
It's. Proactive.
You can do that.
Okay. So I think. Are we, we're ready to vote? Yes? Okay, Mrs. Kennedy, you're up.
Oh, um, Rebecca Chambliss.
Yes.
Our Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Otte?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Ocean passes.
Okay, next up, approval for mediation consultant services. Contracted as recommended that the board of that approves the attached mediation consultants services contract. Need a maker and support, please. Okay, Mrs. Chambliss, that should be the maker. Do we have support?
I'll be the support.
Thank you. Yeah, discussion. Mrs. Thompson, go ahead.
I guess I want to, um, confirm. That this mediation is going to involve all board members, that we are going to have. An input also.
Yes, okay. And I guess that just, I would like to. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Holcomb, go ahead.
It says between superintendent and a board member. So don't say all board members.
Um, that. We should.
It does say services. It says Dr. Green will meet with board member and superintendent individually, then as appropriate together to work through both past and present. Between the parties. There may also be a need for a full board session.
Right.
Miss, miss.
Which will be.
I, I just want to say something. If the board, you know, would like any mediation with me. You know, we, we meet with board meetings or trainings. I have no interest of individual. Uh, personally, at this point, I don't have any, uh, interest, individual. Uh, but as a whole, I, I agree. As a whole, if we get training. And where we could all go together, I support that one hundred percent. But I will do whatever the will of the board is.
Okay, um, uh, I know I was part of the, um. Initial discussion between four of us. And, um, I guess I am personally asking for this to move on. I think not only do we each need to understand, um, the others here, I think, um, we don't. Like any other, um, governing body, we don't have to, um. Necessarily like each other, but we certainly need to strive to respect each other a little bit more. Um, and I am hoping that this is gonna, uh, move us towards that end. And I think everybody has some input and everybody has, I'm sure, uh, uh, a grievance that is legit. And I'm hoping that we can all, um. Discuss it and, and be professional and move on. Not that any of us haven't been, I'm not trying to pick on anybody. I'm just saying that, um, in my heart of hearts, I think we need to do this to move on as a group. Uh, Mrs. Ak, go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to agree with Mr. Holcomb. I think that the administrative comments needs to be changed. Um, to the whole board and not just between the superintendent and one trustee.
Because the, the proposal does say something different than the, um, administrative comments.
Yeah.
So I would concur with that. I think it should reflect, um, the contract. Mrs. Kennedy, do you see there's a little bit of a difference? She's looking, okay. Want to make sure we're all on the same page. Uh, Mrs. Chambliss, go ahead.
Are you talking about where the front page says is amended that the Board of Education approved the attached mediation? And then it's, it both times does say, and a board member. My unders, my understanding from the emails was that it would be. Mr. Green. And two other people. And then as they see fit, they'll expand to bring in other people if they need to. So, but the main goal was. Like two people specifically.
We were, I, I. It has always been, we were going to start there. Together work through both past and present issues between the parties. Um, and then anybody that wants to participate, I would never exclude. And I know it has been suggested by more than one that they wanted to, to be involved. And I would say at that point, any and all that want to be involved. Absolutely should be. I actually think all of us should be, but.
Right.
That's my opinion.
But like Mrs., like, uh, Mrs. Shambliss just said, the contract states it is between the board member and superintendent. It doesn't say the whole board.
And then is, it does, we need to say, um, instead of saying as appropriate, we need to strike maybe. That as appropriate, together work through both paths. Both, yeah, I don't know why I can't speak. I apologize. Work through both past and present issues between all parties.
Okay, and then you would have to do the same thing on the contract.
Yes.
Contract.
Yes.
Why don't we table this? Why don't we table this in until it's rewritten?
Uh, the problem is we're trying to get this going. It's already been a month in the making.
It's been probably over a month and. I want to clarify that this is a mediation between with Rod, to start with Rod Green and two people. And then the board would, he would make phone calls or reach out to any other board member asking if they wanted to be with. Him and another person. And then the whole board would come together and have a discussion. Is the way he was saying it to us during the training.
I know, but that's not what he's got written in the contract.
Right. So we can, we, we can correct that now and make those statements and vote on it.
Isn't it, isn't it more financially sound to get M A S B trainings, three hour sessions, each one's eight hundred dollars? Uh, where it involves the whole board. Just my, my suggestion, instead of fifteen hours. Mediation that.
I don't think need the fifteen hours.
Yeah, I, I think that's the max. I, I, I guess I, I respectfully. Disagree with you, Mr. Abdullah, um, and. My goal is to try to move us out forward, all of us. Um, and I truly do believe that this is a tool we can use to do that. So that's my position. Um.
So let me clarify then, before we take a vote. Are we changing the wording on the?
Both sheets. We have to change it on both sheets.
On both sheets.
Yeah.
I think it's, I. I'm no, yeah, for, for, for two people to have mediation. I think that's crazy.
Yeah.
The whole board needs to be a part of that.
Right.
And.
Okay, and, and I don't disagree. Mr. Urban. What can we do? Because this is a contract. So I don't know what we can legitimately just write in and out with our highlighters. What can we and can't we do to make this reflective of what we want?
So I haven't seen the agreement, but I think what you would do is, um, you would say your, your motion would be to, um, approve. The engagement of Rod Green, um, to act as a mediator, um. For the board. In accordance with the terms of the agreement. Um, or to say, I mean, what, what engage, what do you want to engage him to specifically do? When we had talked originally, there was the idea that Mr. Green would mediate. Um, uh, between, uh, an administrator and one of the board members. Um, because of hard feelings on both sides. Um, is it the pleasure of the board that Mr. Green will work with the entire board?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, what I would just do is I would.
Go on. Clarify that, excuse me, Mr. Urban. To clarify that, Mr. Urban, or Mr. Green said. We, the first initial would be between administrator and the board member. Then he would reach out to any other board member that would want to meet with that, would want to be in mediation in a breakout room on Zoom. Would be if anybody else was interested in a mediation with the administrator. And then he would engage the entire board.
Okay, well.
And it sounds like the board wants to go in a different direction. Um, with regards to that. And maybe we could kind of do it this way. How many hours did he say? Fifteen hours?
Max.
All right.
Max, fifteen hours.
And how much, uh, per hour?
One fifty.
One five zero?
Yes.
And what was the agreement? What does the board want Mr. Green to do specifically?
The original agreement or what we want now?
What do you want now?
I think the whole board should be engaged. I don't think it should be between the administrator and a board member.
Yeah, what, what, what engaged in what specifically?
In mediation, because they don't.
Mediation to bring the board as a whole and not a split board and.
Okay.
That's, so that, that is the problem. That, that is directly the problem. And we can say it, I'm the board member. So if anybody else was in the same position that I am in, would. I would not with any other board member deny you the right to mediation when it's a simple. Thing, it shouldn't even gone to mediation.
It's, no, it shouldn't.
No.
No, I have. And, and, and I believe that it needs to be. And because the, the entire board was not involved. In the meeting with Mr. Urban and Cindy and I and the administrator. You're not aware of everything. That, that in that meeting. So it's unfair for me not to get a mediation. When I tried to clear it up before it even went, I said I didn't need a mediation if I was given clear guidance that. On something. And this is how we got to where we got. And I don't think it's fair that I am left out as a board member. I am a board member. So if any one of you felt you were being treated differently than the entire board, I would support you one hundred percent.
But I mean, Beth, to take it to, 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 uh, to adults to take it to mediation? I, I don't know.
Uh, did you, uh, excuse me, Ms. Uh, Mrs. Uh, did you not hear me say originally? I said that mediation was not needed if I got. A clear guidance that I wouldn't be left out. So, and Mrs. Holder can speak on this. I'm giving her full permission to speak on this. She was in that meeting.
And, and they.
And if our board president is supporting me, it, it's, it, it. To me, it just doesn't seem, uh, it's, it seems unreasonable that. Board members would not support it when even the board president was involved and is saying that. This is how that she agrees with us.
I, I do support it. I did ask for this to come, I guess. I, I. And I don't want to use the word desperate, but I am working real hard towards us all moving together. And I think this is. A, a pump. That became a mountain. And I think that there are, um. Discussions that Mi, Mr. Abdullah and, and Ms. Scott should have. And then I think to make us all healthy. We all need to be a part of that. I think that I heard a little bit about what was going on. I'm not a trained person. Um, I would feel that they both should have a right to have their say. And hopefully make some sort of, um, agreement. But I do believe in, and I don't know of anybody here that can say that all of us don't have an issue with something. And I think if we can work it out and move forward, it's, it's, uh, I'm asking for the support. Let me put it that way. Go ahead, Mr. Holcomb.
Yeah, I, I, I've seen, uh. Mr. Abdullah, he, he sent out a. Email here just a few days back about his, uh, children arts thing. And he apologized for things that he's done to about Ms. Scott, big time. And, uh. I don't, I, I haven't seen nothing back from her. Uh, Beth, uh, I'm sorry, but you bring a lot of issues on.
Mr. Holcomb, okay, I, I, I'm, I'm. You, I disagree with you because I am not allowed to currently email Mr. Abdullah. Okay, so that's. Saying the board does not understand. The board does not understand you weren't in that meeting. So that's what I'm saying. You're, you're saying that you're blaming me already. Because you're only seeing it on Mr. Abdullah's side. So I'm not allowed.
Board meetings since for last year.
He can't respond back to me. Miss, you respond back when you want to, because when I asked you, you wanted. The board packet, you responded and you copied Rebecca on it. So you.
Yeah, right. Because Rebecca said, I'm here at the board office and you would not give her the board packet unless I sent an email.
That true.
Wait, oh, hold on. That's my name. My name is being brought in. Hold up. I did not say he not release it. I text you and I said. Please email Mr. Abdullah and ask him for a hard copy. He, he do it for yourself. I can't, because I can't speak for you.
Well, I, so I, okay, I misunderstood it. I apologize. I thought you needed that. You needed that in order to give it to Rebecca. But that is the only time, that is the only time. But that is the only time, that is the only time I have emailed. And it was to Rebecca and I copied you in it because I needed the board packet. Cause as you all know, I can't copy get it. But I, I was told in that meeting that I could not email you any questions or anything in regards to that.
Miss Scott, I just, I mean, I didn't tell you, can you email me?
I, I didn't say you did.
Wait, wait. And, and I guess this is kind of an example of, of we need to, something to help fix this brokenness, um, for everyone. Um, that's just my request, whatever verbiage that everybody might decide would need to happen to be agreed upon. I am willing to concede. Um, I just really, really don't want the next six months of this school year to be like the last five months have been.
Agreed.
Yes, go ahead, Mister Urban.
I think taking all of this in, um, the best thing to do with what you've got is to simply have somebody offer a motion to engage Mister Green for a maximum of fifteen hours at one fifty per hour to work with the board for team building and mediation, mediating differences. And, um, to empower the board president to execute a contract with Mister Green along those terms.
And, and then where would we be with the one administrator?
So here's, I think the, the real issue that, um, that I think is, is out there. I think that, I think that the, the thing that brought this originally up were significant differences between Beth, um, and the superintendent. Um, and I've watched this pot variously boil and variously simmer over the last probably two and a half, three years. Um, and so I think that it's valid. Um, Angel has valid concerns, um, that he has, and Beth has valid concerns that she has. The problem is that the only forum for that concern is periodic board meetings where you've got a public that is very engaged, um, watching the concerns go back and forth. And there's an incentive, I think, um, to, uh, to have this discussion in a way that's kind of a free for all. I think we need structure. I think Mister Green will bring that structure. And I think that the idea of having Mister Green work with the board as a whole does not foreclose Mister Green breaking out with individuals who have concerns with each other or factions that have concerns with each other. I think, Beth, I hear what you're saying. And I've given this a lot of thought over the last couple of days because I kind of saw the storm coming. Um, I think that this is really just turning the paradigm on its head, really, right? Instead of starting with Beth and expanding to the board, you're going to start with the board and I'm going to guess I would put money on it that, um, that it will end up where you'll have the opportunity to work on your concerns. Now, it takes two. I think we heard during this board meeting that, you know, that Angel's not interested in individual, um, discussions. I would hope that he would change his mind in order to try to get a better dynamic going with, you know, with the board and what's going on. Um, because I think as long as you guys remain factionalized and resisting, you know, the advice that Mister Green would give in terms of how to work together, you're going to have continued friction. So my recommendation would be, um, and Beth, I'm making this with a lot of good faith and Angel, I'm also making it with a lot of good faith because I know the two of you have very serious concerns. Um, you're eyeing each other with mutual distrust all the time. And I think it's, everybody knows this. And I think it's something that if Mister Green comes in and can work with the board, I, I will bet that that work will be constructive between the two of you, but also among the two of you. Because what else do you need for mediation to work? You need people to hold each other accountable. It's like marriage counseling, right? I mean, if you don't have, um, if you don't have, uh, you know, a framework to look at and to hold yourselves accountable to, you know, things kind of tend to get out of hand. So please, I'm just asking you and Angel to please give it a chance. Um, those three points I think are all that you need to engage Mister Green. He's got a heck of a reputation. And I hear he's got red hair. Um, so that makes him a winner in my book. Um, he's got a heck of a reputation for working for boards statewide. And I think fifteen hours, hundred fifty max to mediate differences, um, among board members will help move this along. Please, Beth and Angel, I, you don't owe it to me. Um, but you know, I really believe that you can trust me on this one.
And let me add this, Cindy, um, Mister Urban is right because during, um, the mediation between the whole board, uh, Rod Green can, um, put, um, people in breakout rooms separately. As the, as a, as a whole board, you could have breakout rooms as well.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's absolutely the case. But the other, the other piece of it is, you know, there's two things that you have to be prepared for in mediation. One is to hear tough things about yourself. Um, you know, because it's not you who, you know, you go to bed with at night and you who, you know, see yourself in the mirror in the morning, it's you as other folks see you. So there's that. You gotta be prepared to hear tough things about yourself. But I think also, um, be prepared to, to kind of confront the fact that um, uh, as you're looking at the other person, trying to, through that mediation process, trying to understand where they're coming from as well. And, um, I do think Mister Green has, has the chops to, um, to pull this off. And for what it's worth, I just think that, um, that, that not mediating. And here's an example. So Henry Kissinger wrote about negotiations between the North Vietnamese and the Americans at the end of the Vietnam War. And the North Vietnamese, according to Kissinger, would storm out of the room if the chairs were an inch out of place. Or if the flags weren't folded the correct way at the end of the room. It's because the North Vietnamese didn't want to negotiate. They knew they had a winning hand. And it's, and it's the trivial stuff that stalled the negotiation. Now, in that case, it was a tactic. And here, I'm not saying that anything we have is trivial, but let's get to the negotiations. Um, and by getting to the negotiations, we'll at least get the ball moving forward. And, you know, not kind of, you know, be stuck in just the specific process. Um, I really believe that once you engage and you don't engage in kind of a battle of royal, which is kind of what we have. Um, if you don't engage like that, but you engage with a structure, I do believe that everybody's best angels will prevail on this. I think you all want the same thing. You're saying it differently. You don't trust each other and you don't trust each other. Because what have you had, um, for a long, long time? You've had pockets of, of, of dissent and, um, you've been lying to them. And, and who wouldn't feel suspicious about that?
I agree.
All right, Miss Thompson, go ahead. So Beth, all being said, what do we do with this contract that says a board member and the superintendent?
Yeah, don't, don't sign the contract. Uh, again, the, the three things that we would have a motion, it would be, let's say, four points. Uh, and I have these written down so you can say, you know, I move what Joe said and I will get the board secretary and Miss Kennedy copies of exactly what I said. And there's a recording of what I said. So you'll, you know, you can, you can keep me to it. Um, that the, the Madison, um, District Public Schools Board of Ed um, wishes to engage Rod Green for a maximum of fifteen hours at the rate of one hundred fifty dollars an hour to mediate board slash administrative differences and engage in team building. And the board president is directed and empowered to execute a contract with Mister Green memorializing these terms. These are the material terms. Anything else in the contract is contract ease. Um, and is not a material term. From my perspective, these are material terms. And I would want, I would think that Mister Green, um, is not here, but I would think that Mister Green, being the pro that he is, would agree to these terms. And then, you know, if there's something that we need to sand down in the agreement, bring it back to you guys, but we shouldn't have to replicate this discussion. You know, for example, you know, if he wants to say that, you know, his advice isn't legal advice and he's just a volunteer, or not a volunteer, but he's just a mediator, something along those lines. We can, we can clarify all that. But these are the material terms that the board needs to be concerned with.
Okay. We can.
We have a.
Yeah, we have, we have a motion, we have support, but we have changed it. So I need to know if we have a new motion with support that would then take precedence over the first motion, correct?
Yes.
Motion to override the first motion. Okay, Mrs. Thompson?
Or go ahead, Mister Holcomb.
With Mrs. Holcomb. So we have a motion, Mrs. Thompson, support Mister Holcomb, discussion.
Just to clarify, the motion, the new motion being what I just offered into the record.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. And see nothing else. Um, once we take a vote, then the first motion will die, correct?
Yeah, Roberts would tell you there's a technical way to amend the motion. But I think essentially what you're doing with seven votes is you're saying that this is a superseding motion, um, and you're going to go with that. And, and I think that's fine.
Oh, good enough. Mrs. Kennedy, you're up, please.
Okay, Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes, thank you.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
All I have to say is unsolicited, I truly believe that all eight of you, the seven board members and Angel, you guys all want the same thing. Um, and, and I really believe that Rod will help elicit that, um, for the board. So, and I'll get to see the result, but I think it will work for you guys.
Great, thank you. Okay, next up, approval of resolution calling for election and approving non-homestead operating millage proposal. It is recommended the Board of Ed approve the resolution calling for the election and approving the non-homestead operating millage proposal, uh, need motion and support.
I'll make them up.
Thank you, Ms. Scott, support. Ms. Chambliss, uh, I know that this is routine, um, discussion. Anybody have any questions? Yes, Ms. Chambliss, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted, so I'm, I'm a little worried that it's possible, like voters, when they, they'll think they'll confuse it with the bonds and everything. So maybe there could be some type of information given out. Just if we're, if we're considering a bond or sinking fund or something for November, I would hate to see this being on the August ballot kind of mess that up.
Um, actually, me and Mister Abdullah had had a conversation earlier today. Um, I don't know who else, um, people that have owned their homes for decades have seen this, um, on, uh, the ballot. I know when we used to have elections in the spring, it just used to be on the ballot with that. Whether we had a millage, um, or a bond or anything else. I know, um, Mister Abdullah, how did we find out? Is the city having anything else? Or would this be the only thing on that ballot?
No, no one returned, um.
Okay.
Also, as I get more information, um, I could, I could feed it.
Fair enough. Um, did you want to share, um, the concern you had that was almost the reverse of what Mrs. Chambliss had?
My concern I had similar to yours, uh, Rebecca, was if we put it in November and, and we put in the option of sinking fund and bond renewal and this other one, my concern is, am I gonna confuse the public even more by putting all three together? And so having this apart, um, again, property owners have seen this. This is routine every, every five years. So this is a, um, an easy decision for them to make. And then it would not confuse um, the public or anyone that's watching our board meetings because we've been talking about bonds. All of a sudden would see eighteen mills along with a sinking fund and bond renewal. And it, it, it might, it might get the opposite result and then everything might get voted down because they might think crazy.
I had a comment as well.
Sure, go ahead, Miss Hill.
Okay, um, I just wanted to make clear that, um, this is time sensitive. And it's on non-homestead properties, which means that it is not on, it's on second homes, not your primary property. And, um, right now, we're only levying seventeen point four mills, which means that we're not levying the eighteen mills that a school district can levy for their operating expenses. And we're losing, uh, a little over fifty one thousand dollars and we're not collecting our full, um, our full foundation allowance because we're not levying the full eighteen mills that a school district can levy. And this is extremely important and it's time sensitive. And we need to be able to go to the voters in August because, you know, we have a, a winter levy and we have a summer levy. And see, you know, the late, later we late, we wait, we're going to lose that, that operate. We're not going to be able to collect our full foundation allowance because we're not levying the eighteen mills that school districts can levy. We're levying something less. And each year, we are impacted by the headly rollback, which means that we lose a little percentage each year. This upcoming year, we're going to be even less than the seventeen point four, depending on, you know, how much the percentage of the rollback. So that's the reason why we need to go to the voters to restore our eighteen mills that we should be levying as a school district. And it's on second homes and non-homestead property. It is not on the primary property.
Right. And, and I just had one question, Dr. Hill. My understanding was it rolls off July first and that everything would be retroactive if this was approved in August. Is, is my understanding correct?
Yes. You know, because, um, um, you know, uh, we start our levy, like you said, in July. We need to go to the voters by August.
August.
You know, so we don't, we don't lose anything so we can be fully restored. So we can, um, be able to get our full foundation allowance. And, you know, last year was fifty one thousand that we are losing. This year is going to be even more. And it's not on the primary property at all. That's on non-homestead property, meaning second homes. It does not include a family's primary residence.
Okay, any other questions? Beth, no hand?
I, I have no questions. Thank you.
All righty, see none. Ms. Kennedy, you're up. You're muted.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Question passes.
Thank you. Um, next up is our energy report. And I believe Mister Jamie was going to handle this. There he is. He's out of the shadows.
Angel, I shared the presentation with you. Do you want to, um, open it?
Yes, I'll access it right now. Give me one second.
Thank you. So I just took the, so far, I just got the gas and electric, um, presentation ready. I'm working on, um, direct energy and, um, AT&T. And I'm just comparing, uh, between the four district buildings so you can get an idea. It's for the last three years, starting in, uh, January of twenty eighteen.
Amy, did you just, uh, send it to me right now? I'm still trying to find it.
No, I, I emailed it to you, you know, maybe a half hour ago.
Okay, give me one second. Let me try to find. Okay, I found it. Uh, it says, wait one second. Use PowerPoint, um, Jamie?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I interject something here, Madam President?
Sure.
That the reason we did this was because when we tracked these bills, we would go along every single month and the bills were pretty much the same. And then two years running, November's bill came in for December. And one was, and don't quote me on the amount, but it was approximately twenty-four thousand for one building. And we had another one that was twenty-six thousand, one month, one building. So we asked them to come out and try and figure out what's going on with these electric and gas bills. That's what generated them coming out and checking the building out. Am I correct, Mr. Abdullah?
I think timing, uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. It, it, it just, everything fell into place, so, um, it's always good to, to do an assessment and, and based on your, your request on information, it just, everything fell into place. And I'm ready for the, uh, PowerPoint, Jamie. So let me try to. Prestise, can you see this?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Jamie, just let me know when you're ready to go into the next slide.
All right, you can go to the first one for ECC. So this starts in January of eighteen. Uh, the blue line is DTE and the orange line is consumers. So you can see the trend over the last, uh, roughly three years. Um, you know, the, starts off around thirty-two hundred a month, um, dips down lower through the summer months. Um, so you can kind of see the trend here. I also put the building square footage on there, so you can kind of compare, uh, the size of each building compared to the, uh, cost. You can go to the next one if you, once you guys are finished, you can just let him, let us know. Same thing here, you can see the trend over the last three years. And I'm, like I said, I'm working on direct energy and AT&amp;T, right? I don't have those right now, but I could do another update at the next meeting, once I receive that information.
Next slide.
Whenever the board's ready.
Okay.
We're ready.
I'm ready.
I'm ready.
Same thing here with Wilkinson, you could see the three-year trend. DT is pretty consistent, most of the buildings, it's just, uh, the gas bill, it fluctuates over the winter and summer months.
Wow.
The high school's obviously the highest cost, um, with the largest square footage.
I'm good.
And, and you know what we could do, Prestise, we could send you this, uh, PowerPoint, so if you want to, um, I know Ms. Thompson um, compares and stuff, um, and we'll be happy to share this PowerPoint, just so you could have more time with it if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Should I move on, next one?
Yes.
So this is for the admin office, I was only able to go back to April of nineteen for this one, um, something else I'm working on, but, uh, this is, this gives you a breakdown for the last, uh, year roughly.
You guys look like a cat.
I, I, I do get, I do raise the heat a lot in this admin office, I get super cold, so also that to me, because I, I get cold so quickly, so I always check up the heat, I apologize.
I'm gonna buy you a sweater.
No, I wear a coat, I wear a hoodie and, and, and I still get cold. Um, let me know when you're ready, I can move on, next one.
I'm ready. We're ready.
So this is the consumers' energy summary, this has all the buildings on it, you can see the differences between, um, you know, all the different, the admin, ECC, MES, Wilkinson and the high school.
So the big number, uh, blue is, is of course the high school.
Right.
We do believe we could get the cost down, once we, you know, we, we tend to some items. Um, we, we believe that once we get, uh, better, um, HVAC and, and, uh, more sound roofing, um, that we will, those costs, um, will go down. And then, um, Jamie and I did talk about, um, I, I, I don't want to cut you off, Jamie, are you gonna talk about direct energy and why, what, what's happening there?
Um, you can, you can take care of that one.
So, the direct energy has us locked in on a contract that was, um, um, signed not by us, it was a five-year agreement. Uh, we are trying to see if we could get out of it and what the costs are. But we, you know, Jamie has noticed that there's times that, correct me if I'm wrong, that direct energy, Jamie, charges us more than consumered. Does.
Yeah, the accounts payable knows more about that aspect of it, she sees all the bills for that, um, but yeah, that's, that's what she was kind of saying today when I was showing her this chart.
So we're, we're gonna try to see how we could maneuver around that, that is not a contract that we signed. Um, um, and it still has three and a half years left on it, or three years left on it still. Or, yeah. Should I go next slide?
Yep. Same thing here for DT.
Prestise, are you ready for the next slide?
Yep.
Yeah.
Listen, just, um, the monthly averages in the last three years, uh, for the school buildings and then the last year for our office, we admin office. To get some of the monthly averages. So that's, that's what I have for now, and then, uh, I'm gonna update it as I get more information, uh, from the other utility companies.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie.
Rob.
You.
Well, actually, Jamie's not going far, because unless there's any questions, next up is personnel and um, I'm handing that over to him as well.
All right. Uh, so we have a couple of new hires, Miranda Van Koppenel, she's a new teacher at Madison Elementary. Um, we also have Lynette, uh, Olden, uh-huh, Oledge, I can't pronounce her last name.
Be Olinie Check.
Oledge Nietcheck, yeah, sure. And she's a new teacher at Madison High School, she's starting, uh, May tenth. We have a couple resignations, Francis Nottingham, he's a bus driver, Rachel Turner, custodian at the high school, and Scott LaBrash, uh, he was one of the former, uh, grounds guys. That's, that's all of them.
Okay, so I will take it from here, it's recommended that the Board of Education accept the personnel report for Madison District Public Schools as presented. I need a maker and support, please.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Thompson.
Maker.
I'll support.
Miss, uh, support, any discussion? Ms. Chambliss?
Um, I was just wondering, I'm, I'm sure that, you know, members of the board received an email, as I did. Is there anything we could have done to save any of these employees? Is there anything we could have done? Maybe they needed a different shift, they needed a different.
Discuss this.
Oh, we can't?
I don't believe so, no.
I don't believe we can discuss employees on open forum, can we?
No.
We can't discuss them by name, I'm not discussing anyone by name, I'm just asking, is there any way we could have retained employees that are leaving? I'm not, like, picking apart their names, I'm just saying, could we have retained employees here?
Yeah, those are actually questions that, um, that are not forbidden, um, from a board member perspective, but I think the answer that you're gonna get is that the administration, the superintendent is specifically empowered to restructure, I think it's actually in his contract and the policies to structure and restructure staff as he sees fit. Um, so it's a legitimate question, it might be something that, that you might want to ask for a report on. Um, but, uh, I think you're gonna find that, that the board policies and superintendent's contract are gonna be what gets relied upon.
I appreciate that, it's just part of his superintendent goals is retaining staff, so that's something that's measurable by three employees leaving this month, so I'm just asking, did we, is there anything we could have done? Was it just, you know, another district scooped in, which we've had, you know, a lot of happening and we can't do anything about it? Um, was it retiring, you know what I mean? Like, was there, just was there anything we could have done?
Yeah, and that's a fair question.
So, there, there is movement all the time in operations, as you can see, we hired people, so as we hired people, it's because they leave other districts, there's a lot of movement, people make decisions. Um, people, people make, you know, they resign, they make their own decisions on what, what motivates them. Uh, we as a school district put people where we think, um, they're best suited and sometimes, um, uh, people don't like, the, they don't like that, but we're not in the business of, we're not gonna be able to please everyone, we have to put people in, in order to run the operations of the district, and if there's a shortage, for example, I'm a, I'm a secondary high school teacher, if there was a need at the middle school, then they might move me, I can't say, well, I don't want to move because the district needs to plug in holes where, where they're needed and, and but we've, we've, we've been over backwards on accommodating the people. During the pandemic, we gave them an opportunity to continue, um, to get unemployment, even though they turned down, um, a recall, which we were in our right to say, well, you've refused recall, so we've, we've attempted to accommodate, but we have to also run the operations of the school district, we just have to.
Right, okay.
Any other questions? Beth, no hand, right?
No, thank you.
Mr., Mr. Urban?
I just want to say that Ms. Chambliss' question, Mr. Abdullah's answer, perfect. I mean, uh, you know, from, you don't need me to tell you that, but you didn't go into individual employee cases. Um, you described the general thinking behind what you were looking for, was a general question, general response, I mean, that, you know, in terms of looking for stuff that you know, that, that you can kind of take out of your playbook and say, hey, I actually, I can't golf worth a darn, but I actually, you know, got a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty yard drive, or whatever's important, that was a hundred and sixty yard drive, or two hundred yard drive, or whatever the, the cool description is.
Cool. We'll, we'll take that, we're baby steps. Um, okay, so, see nothing else. Uh, Ms. Kennedy.
Okay, we'll start with Mark Holcomb.
Yes.
Deborah Ott.
Yes.
Gloria Thompson.
Yes.
Beth Scott.
No.
Cindy Holder.
Yes.
And Rebecca Chambliss.
No.
Motion passes.
Right. Okay, next up, check register approval. It is recommended the Board of that approve the monthly expenditures totaling one million, seven hundred, seven thousand, seven hundred, sixty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents. I need a maker and support, please. I'll make the motion. Thank you, Ms. Thompson, support Mr. Holcomb.
Yep.
Any discussion? Beth, no hand?
No, thank you.
Alrighty, Ms. Kennedy, you're up.
Rebecca Chambliss?
No.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next up, uh, committee reports, uh, GRC. Anybody have one?
So that would be me, we are meeting this Wednesday and I've, um, forwarded to the board the GRC updates that come into me during the month, but our regular board meeting is Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. Next up, diversity, equity and inclusion committee.
Um, we had a meeting about two weeks ago, they're still holding up on doing the board-wide twenty-one day challenge. Um, so they're moving it to September, but they did open up to where if boards want to individually go in there, we could, so if anybody was interested in that, I could send you the link. Um, it's really eye-opening, you don't realize some things that you see day to day that just are not equal. Um, and then we have another meeting in two weeks, and I think they're discussing at that time some different programs that they're hoping to roll out in schools, so I'll update you when I go to that.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Parks and Rec.
I don't have any report right now.
Okay. Uh, next up, board comments, and Mr. Holcomb had asked to, to be first, so he could share the, uh, the consortium what, that you wanted to tell us all about again.
Yeah, I want to remind, uh, the parents and that about, uh, um, the operators engineers gonna have their career day on, uh, May sixth. And, um, Mr. Abdullah, do you know how many, uh, students we got registered for that?
Yeah, I could, I could give you, um, a tally, um, broken down by, um, middle school and high school, as you, as, if you just keep going and then I, I'll have those numbers as you're talking.
Okay, and I'd also like to touch on, uh, O-Tech, um, we went to O-Tech and we looked at their, uh, manufacturing program, and like I said before, there's no way we can compete with them. They have robotics, they got, uh, Master Cam, they got CNC machine, they got welding, they, they got everything there. Um, there's no way we can compete, so we're not even gonna try for that MANSI project program. Um, maybe down the road, up to the board, maybe we can get rid of some of that equipment, it's up to, you know, vote on that, it's a whole nother story. But, uh, anyway, I just want you to, uh, I want to thank, uh, the principals, uh, Mr. Harwood and the principal at the high school and the counselors for doing a great job on getting this information out to our students. Thank you.
Yep, so Ms. Holcomb, I believe you had seven at the high school and, and thirty additional, and there are, um, I believe Wilkinson's taking their eighth graders as well, so.
Nice.
Yeah.
Good job.
You're taking the eight, and then, um, so we have a good turnout. Uh, and we're just trying to help people understand that there's, um, different career paths for different individuals.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. And thank you all for coming out, sticking with us tonight.
Thank you. Uh, with that, I'm gonna go to Beth only so I don't forget her.
Um, I just want to, uh, I'd like to thank, um, the public for their support and patience with, um, board. Um, we're trying our best and congratulations to the basketball team. That's all.
Okay, uh, Ms. Chambliss?
Um, I just wanted to say thank you to all the teachers, happy teachers' week. Um, I hope it's a great week for you, you really deserve it this year of all years, I think teachers just do amazing in general, but to go through COVID, like the rock stars you are, I see what you're doing, I have five kids in three different buildings, I can see what all of you are doing. I wanted to point out that I really thought it was amazing that Ms. Staffen at MES, um, arranged for a day with Ms. Provenzola, Ms. Hemingway also, for the student council of MES to go into their, like, center court and garden, they drew, or they made this big huge circle with an M in it, and they put rocks in it, and they painted the circle red and the M gold, and just really beautified the area around the school, picked up weeds, um, and then, you know, the kids had a great day, they got to have lunch, and it was just a lot of fun, it was something that you wouldn't see normally done in COVID. But Ms. Staffen and Ms. Provenzola and Hemingway, they really put it together, so the kids were safe, they had a great time. And I just love that they go so far above and beyond for these kids. Um, because those are the things the kids are gonna remember, they're gonna remember COVID, but they're gonna remember the day they got to go garden with their friends after not seeing them for, you know, how long, if they're virtual. So I just wanted to say thank you so much to all the staff and happy teachers' week, good night.
Okay, Ms. Scott, you're up next, please.
Uh, well, I just want to thank the public for sticking with us. Um, uh, I want to congratulate the boys' basketball team, and I want to thank the, uh, baseball coach for the tarps. With this rain lately, I'm sure they're coming in handy. Uh, to Bonnie and Victoria, congrats to you on your awards. Um, and the, um, the Leo literacy coaching presentation by Kelsey and Lisa was wonderful. I wanted to thank them for taking the.
I wanted to thank them for taking the time out to present that to us. And I just also wanna, uh, reiterate that, uh, for all the teachers, happy teachers' week, we greatly appreciate everything you do, thank you.
Okay, uh, Ms. Thompson?
I also would like to thank everybody who came out today. I wanna bring up an issue on our general business, I, I followed all the emails today, I thought it was great that Angel sent emails out or said, you know, he sent emails out asking us to keep in touch with him on any questions we had to trimline our meeting and have it go a little faster. That being said, we do have a treasure and the protocol, we have protocol in place for treasures that everything I request, or if I don't have the answer when you question me, I will find out and forward it to you. That trimline's not having to go to Edwina numerous times, Angel numerous times. I mean, I can show everybody, this is the stack of invoices I requested. Every invoice that was requested above and beyond what I requested, I had our, I already had, all you had to do was send me an email and ask me, and I probably had the answer for you. So going forward, let's follow our protocols, so we're not inundating the board, the board office all the time. I'd also like to thank everybody who came out again. I wanna say congratulations to the basketball team. And I wanna thank the gentleman who bought the tarps and congratulations to anybody who got awards. And everybody, have the teachers have a nice teachers' week, thank you.
And with that, I will say, uh, ditto to all the above. Um, my husband was a special ed, special ed teacher, excuse me, for more than twenty years, I know the time and effort everybody puts in, so, uh, uh, thank you is less than, than probably what is required but appreciated, I'm sure, with just being told. Uh, the only group we missed is moms. Sunday's coming up, happy mom's day, don't wanna miss that, without us, no schools would have children, so. Uh, with that, happy mom's day and, um, thank you, I, I really am truly, uh, trying to move us forward together. And it's gonna be a struggle and I realize that, but I'm determined, I think everybody else is determined and I'm hoping that, um, together we can make this work better. So, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, fighting for that. Uh, who could give Beth the motion and Gloria the support and Ms. Kennedy?
Okay. Second. Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Deborah Ott?
Yes.
Rebecca Shambless? Beth Scott?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, with that, good night.
Bye, everybody.
Bye. Thanks, Mary.
You're welcome, have a good night, see you guys tomorrow.
Oh, that's right. Yes.
Reminder.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.